Okay, it's started maybe. There we go. We're already in session. We had a public session prior to this meeting. So if you'd please stand and join me in the public relations.
... to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the rest of the meeting, I'd like for a moment of silence. Jack, I'll put it down just before. Continue to review. Okay, the next order of business is to approve minutes. The school board meeting, December 5th. Do I have a move approved?
Some moves.
Moved by Brody.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Jim. Okay, any errors, omissions, corrections? Okay, seeing none, all is in favor of approving the minutes of the school board meeting of December 5th. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Woodside as well. The next is the meeting for the Academic Affairs Committee on December 19th. Do I hear any motions on that?
I'm going to accept the meeting of academic affairs committee. Minutes of December 19th.
It has been moved. And who else was at that meeting? Okay, Stephanie, seconded. Okay, any other discussion from the Academic Affairs Committee? Okay, those that were in attendance, all those in favor, single they saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Tom. Okay, and the next is the Finance Committee meeting for December 20th. A motion for that?
I'm going to move to accept.
Moved to accept by Jim Pittman?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brody. Any discussion on the Finance meeting? Yes, Stephanie?
Can you remove the adverb from my note on the first question, please?
Yes, we can do that. Okay, any other discussion on that? Okay, those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Woodside as well. Okay, the next item is the manifests that are being signed tonight. The on the manifest for accounts payable is $1,823,138.11. And the payroll manifest being signed tonight are $3,413,734.66. For a total being signed tonight of $5,236,872.77. A motion to approve the manifests?
Some moves.
Moved by Brody. Seconded here by Jim. Okay, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana? And Chair Woodside as well. Okay, it's time now for public input. We're limited to 15 minutes, less extended by the Board. And we ask that each individual that wants to speak, limit there, we want us to about three minutes so everyone can have a chance to speak. Well, if you want to also come up and use the microphone, if that's easier for you.
I think everybody can probably hear me okay. My name is Steve Wood, for those that don't know me, Chairman of Wolfboro Police Commission here. Later on in tonight's meeting, there's going to be a discussion about an additional SRO to be placed at the middle school. Just real quick, how this originated. The Commission is tasked with staffing our police department as we deem necessary. We don't take that lightly, but we don't overdo that. We don't just hire police officers willy-nilly, if you will. But in this particular case, we are briefed every month at our meetings about activity, not only what's going on around the town, but more specifically, what's going on in schools. And we've been tracking on this for the last few years. We've seen an uptick in activity in the schools. We know that there is a definite need for full-time SRO at the middle school. At our meeting in October, the Commission voted to move forward with this position. We apologize to the school board because we kind of blindside the new folks with our request, but it is that necessary that we do this. It's similar to what would happen with the high school SRO positions, if I don't forget, basically, the costs are split. There's more cost in the town of Wolfboro, but the school is paying their portion. They only reimburse the payers of the SROs actually in the school, if you afford the school. But we believe, given what the climate is around the country, that it's paramount that we protect our students and our staff, faculty, everybody who's in the schools, that we can. We've already gone ahead and instituted a part-time SRO, split the time for Corporal Boucher. He's splitting his time between Crescent Lake School and Carpenter School as much as he can, but unfortunately, we're sliding him off to the middle school to deal with situations there. Also, Officer Devine is supposed to be at the high school, is staying in a priest's case load. I know, for example, Officer Corporal Boucher, when he covered for one week, not too long ago, while Officer Devine was on vacation, he picked up 12 new cases at the high school in one week. That's a lot. And so, and that one officer at the high school was kind of keeping an eye on the middle school and everything on his campus, the Arts Center, Crescent Lake, it's a lot. So we've tried to mitigate that by getting a part-time in our schools funded only by Wolfboro Elementary Schools here in town, where we are asking for district support for the permanent full-time SRO in the middle school. So if anybody has any questions, we can talk about that later on, but I wanted to announce how this all came about, before it actually gets discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Chief Rondo?
Thank you. So I've probably been here the longest of all the police officers, getting married going, 27 years. When I first started here in 1996, as a patrolman, I will tell you that even then, at the high school complex, it was busy. And then the football coach and I would often chit-chat at parking lot C in the early morning hours. And there were days that I literally would not be able to get away from the high school complex as a patrolman. My assignment was not the high school, it was all of Wolfboro. And it's ramped up from 1996. In 2000, we started our first SRO. Sergeant Chris Keaton was a patrol sergeant with Wolfboro, was selected to be the first SRO for the high school. And he started in August of 2000, so essentially 22 years ago or more. And I called him today, he's now Chief of Police in Bartlett, and I called him today just to make sure I understood what his activity was like back then. I said, hey, Chris, when you were up at the high school, talk to me about your annual reports in terms of, what were your year-end averages like in terms of incident reports and crimes and so forth that you took in? He said, hey, Dean, first of all, good to hear from you. Happy New Year. And that was a joke. No, come on, lighten up. He was running about 50 to 75 cases for the five years that he was up here each year. Now, that's a lot. That's a lot. Anybody in law enforcement will tell you 50 cases is a lot. These cases have large tails to them. The juvenile system is not like the adult criminal system. It's not even close. All right? The juvenile justice system is very long and drawn out, and it's designed to be that way, for a whole bunch of different reasons I'm not going to get into. But the cases are lengthy. The process is very lengthy. I ran our current numbers of cases as of the end of 2022, and this year, SRO Devine is running 143 cases. 143 for this complex. Corporal Boucher, who's only been up here since, help me out Corporal, November, December?
Yeah, the end of October.
End of October. Okay, close enough. He's running 26. It's a total of 169. Now, in 22 years, society's changed quite a bit. Things have become more complex. The added challenges to social media, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, the fast food, fat rap video culture that we seem to have perpetuates a lot of problems, and it facilitates an awful lot of issues. And these issues are not easily solved, they're not easily investigated, but they are serious. They're things like bullying, and cyberbullying, and fraud, and theft, and yes, child pornography. But these are the issues that we're dealing with. All right, now, this may not be easy for some of you to understand or even hear, my apologies to you, but I want to let you know what my officers are dealing with. They're dealing with these very complex cases, very complex crimes, that are not like they were when you all were in school, or even when I was in school. All right? Society's changed tremendously. Having an SRO at the middle school allows us to do some things that are so simultaneous. First, we can interdict these problems before they become exacerbated. We can get services in to assist the juveniles, as well as the adults who are involved. We can get into the families. We can address the root and systemic causes of these issues, where the issues lie. If these go undetected, the damage and trauma is tremendous. It is tremendous. The cost to the taxpayer is tremendous. One only need look at what is going on in the rest of the United States today. One need only look and pay attention to what is going on in New Hampshire. The violence in the state is absolutely unprecedented. Shootings and stabbings and murders are occurring in the state that I didn't see 10 years ago. It's happening. Pay attention to it. We are not immune from this. We live in a eucolic area. I say that all the time. It's beautiful here. This is why we choose to live and work in Wolfboro. But ladies and gentlemen, we're not immune from this. We need to be in a position to deal with it should it end up on our doorstep. Having a second SRO at the middle school will give me a body of three, a team led by a corporal, that can flex on any situation that occurs within that campus.
Chief, I don't want to cut you off. If you could wrap it up a little bit.
Roger, that's right. It will give us time, those three would give us time to get the cavalry up over the hill and save the day. So please, thank you very much for supporting this. I would encourage you to vote for this. This is a good thing, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
We're going to tag even as much like we do every day. So our lot officer Devine go first. She's been here longer, and she's the full-time SRO, but she's just going to give you a brief idea of what she goes through just on a daily basis.
Majority of you guys know me, students here too. It's very nice to see you all. So high school and middle school, every day's different, it's just like we're out on patrol. I kind of count this as my little town of Wolfboro, just being here in a school. I start my duty in my office, my door's open, it's always open. I sometimes can't even get out of it. Kids just come and see me every day, every hour, every chance they can get. When they're trying to skip classes, they come see me. They tell me their problems that are happening in school, tell me their problems that are happening at home, in any town here in this district. I take a lot of my reports from students or from friends of students who say, hey, so-and-so really needs to talk to a police officer about this. A lot of them are sexual assaults, which I get very frequently. Extremity issues I get all the time through, actually, any town in the district. I do a lot of welfare checks. I work tremendously with DCYF, other towns. In December, myself and Corporal Boucher had a response at their middle school for some pretty violent things, two of which that we had to be seen by a judge that day, a few hours later. I'm sure that you're all familiar with it, how to deal with the lockdown that had for the poor Christmas. So that's a very busy thing. A lot of violence happens, actually, in our bathrooms, and I can't necessarily prevent a lot of that because it happens in our men's bathrooms, and I'm not going to just go randomly into the men's bathrooms. So I find out a lot of things after the fact that it happens. With another SRO, I certainly use somebody to go into those bathrooms, to patrol, walk and be inside the schools, outside the schools, helping check my doors. Just another presence I know will deter crime. And Corporal Boucher actually was very interesting in court today.
Yeah, so I found out, I was in court today for the lockdown incident that happened on December 21st. I'm still dealing with that. As the chief pointed out, the tales on these things go on for months, but still require action from us. So I found out that Wolfboro, compared to anybody else in the county, we have more juvenile petitions and more CAMHS process, which is a new process for juvenile, than the entire county combined. So you take all the other towns in this county, and we are just far ahead of them on the process. And I understand we're regional schools, but there's other regional schools in the area too. There's other bigger schools in the area and stuff, and just towns alone, but no one is even touching the numbers that we're putting up right now. And believe me, I used to often in the morning to see Mary, say, hey, what are you doing? Because I'm going to run off. You know, how many times I'm stuck right here for the rest of the day? I don't get a chance to run off. Or we're here, and you get ready to do something with the high school, and then middle school's calling, hey, we need somebody down here now. I mean, the incident the other day, we were able to turn all that down within three minutes. If there was a middle school SRO there, it would have been even shorter timeframe. Although it came in as potentially really, really bad, it ended up not being bad, but the process that goes through right now. It also found out where, out of the three emergency placements within the state, we have two of them. So the violence is growing, and now we have more of a hand on what we're doing with that than we were, hand-in-hand with the JPDOS. So when we have violent acts like that, now, we don't even process with a, we'll do our petitions out, call the judge out, get emergency orders, and take them right over to court and see if we can get them placed. So, and the violence is just building on us. My background's in SWAT and active shooter stuff, and we are now going into the vogue where we're teaching all the staffs the craze, the civil response to active shooters. So the entire Governor Wentworth staff, we put power points on between now and the end of February. And then I'll be traveling around to different schools for that. And then in March, it's all going to come together with a hands-on exercise here at Kingswood with the entire staff. We're going to break it down, we're going to do some tourniquets, some first aid, some CPR, and we're going to work on some rude barricades on what to do if something happens. So there's a lot behind the scenes right now that's being worked out, but in hopes just to get, every school shooting, or any bad thing that happened at a school, they always, talk to anybody, they always say, well, I never thought it could happen here. So if it does happen here, I'm in hopes that we're going to be prepared. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in this public input? Yes, sir.
Are we going to be able to ask questions of the budget?
For sure.
Okay, thank you. I did want to point out that we have important dates to remember.
David. I think everybody knows them, but in case somebody doesn't know you, just name it, name in town.
Dave Pittman, Woodside.
Thank you.
The dates, the violent incidents are incorrect on your important dates to remember. We either start on the 25th and then the 3rd this year. And I think you follow the same schedule as town. If that be the case, I checked with Andrew, it's okay. Yesterday. And so, double check, eight, seven, Wednesday, four.
We will definitely check that now.
Okay, and reopen the contract within your last set of minutes, and I couldn't find what that meant. And I just wanted to ask you, if any you can explain.
There was a request from one of our unions to reopen a contract that had already been passed last year, and the Board decided that that wasn't appropriate, that the voters voted to approve a contract last year, and there was no reason for us to reopen that contract.
Oh, do you know, can you tell?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, I'm Kurt Tavialder, I'm with the Friends of Pop Whalen, and I'm not sure if this is, is this the time where we would talk about a petition item?
You can talk, whatever you'd like to talk about.
Thank you. I just want to make sure it's the appropriate time to do that check. So I live in Wolfboro, Friends of Pop Whalen, I'm also the Vice President, back there with hockey. I'm a Kingswood alum, and I grew up playing hockey at the Pop Whalen Ice and Arts Center from second grade through high school, and I still play there now at almost 42 years of age. And I had the fortune to play on two state championship teams, one of which we won. And those experiences were important to me, and I know to many other students, those types of experience are very important. And I see many young student athletes here today, who, this is an important issue to be about, and that's why they are on here, as well as parents, coaches, and other Board members and members of the community who support this. So over time, Pop Whalen, in its previous iteration, had grown with additions. It had four tiny locker rooms without shower facilities, and then there was the lobby addition with two locker rooms with showers, one used by Kingswood, one by Brewster. And only one team, boys or girls, could use the respective schools' facility at a time, so obviously, that's not fair to the other team. And Friends of Pop Whalen and the voters of the town of Wolfboro have built this fantastic new facility that opened on January 4th on time and on budget. So there are eight locker rooms in the design, each pair of two shares a locker room with shower, excuse me, bathroom with shower facilities. And the design is such that it was set up that Kingswood could occupy exclusively and outfit, customize, custom outfit, two rooms, one for the boys and one for the girls' teams. That has always been part of the plan. So, but neither the town of Wolfboro as an entity, nor the Friends of Pop Whalen is tasked with providing the Governor Wentworth Regional School District with exclusive locker room to use. So that is an extra cost for customization, and there's a cost and value to exclusivity. So what we're talking about is approximately a little over 1,000 square feet at a build-out value of $247 per square foot for a basic box, and then customization is over and above that. So the school district would have year-round exclusive use of these areas. Obviously, the boys' and girls' hockey teams would benefit from this, where only in previous years, the boys had a dedicated space, which is of course unfair, but not having dedicated spaces for the teams is not on par for what other similarly situated high schools have at their home facilities. And it's also not on par with what the other sports teams have, who use this building as their home facility. They have a dedicated locker room for their, for their sport, and that's not the case at Pop Whalen at this time. So beyond hockey, of course, you know, why would we talk about something here that's just for hockey? That's not what I'm here to talk about. I'm here to talk about something that would be used for hockey, but would also be used for a myriad other uses. So perhaps the ski teams might utilize when they practice at the hill. The baseball and softball teams, if they set up and do indoor practices, batting cages in the offseason, they could utilize those rooms. Indoor soccer, field hockey, tennis, and other sports. Beyond sports, this is a year-round, multi-use facility. The occupancy permit, I don't know if you're familiar, but it is approved for up to 900 people to occupy the facility at a time, so that could be a huge event, maybe a graduation, a technology, club competition, Future Business Leaders of America exposition, Lakes Region Technology Center events, Special Olympics, or other large gatherings could use this facility. And these rooms would provide dedicated, secure space with rest and shower facilities for Governor Wentworth Regional School District students and faculty to utilize. So yeah, it's for hockey, but it's for really anything that one can imagine and then have the motivation to put it to action. So potentially, if that imagination and motivation was there, it could be touched by all segments of the student body of Governor Wentworth Regional School District. So the request is by a petition for $300,000, which we're hoping the Board is going to support. It would be, of course, a minute portion of the overall budget. It would be spread, it's proposed over the '23 and '24 years, so two equal payments. And so, and I heard the term surprise earlier. This is not a surprise. I have toured the facility myself with the Superintendent, the School Board Chair, and some other Board members. I know other Board members have also seen it without me present. I know the A.D. and Principals have seen it, and this has been part of the discussion for quite some time. So what we're asking is with, I have 65 signatures for this to be added as a warrant article for '23, and for the voters to decide on how they want to spend their money and support their students, not just these students here, but all students, and not just today's students, but across generations of students with varying interests and needs. So I don't know if now's the time to present those signatures, but.
We thank you for that information, Kurt, and this will be a petition warrant article. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, we will have additional public input at the end of our meeting, so we will move on with the balance of our meeting. Next up is the Student Representative Report, and Marcella cannot be here, but the Superintendent does have a report.
Thank you. I have Marcella's report, and I'll read that for you tonight. Okay, around the school, our student council is currently working on getting ready for our annual lip sync competition during winter carnival. For the lip sync, each class comes up with a routine to various songs and performs in front of the entire school and a panel of judges. This year's music theme is boys bands and girls groups. On Saturdays, the National Honor Society holds weekly Kingswood and Kids sessions. Kingswood and Kids is for Crescent Lake students who want to come to the high school and play gym-like games with NHS members. After an hour of games, the students then participate in a craft for 15 minutes and then a game of tag in the school. The National Honor Society has also begun to partake in leadership training sessions before school, where we learn skills to implement during Kingswood and Kids. As for sports, the indoor track team is back up and running, literally. The team has had three meets so far and have done very well. The 55-meter and 300-meter school records were broken by Lauren McPhee, and the 200-meter school record was broken by Kylie Raposa, Marcela Donido, our school board rep, Carly Johnson, and Lauren McPhee. The boys wrestling team has also held two home meets, and boys and girls hockey have each had a game at the newly refurbished Pop Whalen ice rink. Great job, guys and girls. Additionally, the boys and girls basketball teams are now holding Saturday basketball camps for players in elementary and middle school. These camps are coached by Boys varsity head coach Joe Farrar and high school players. Marcella has a lengthy report in addition from the Technology Center, and we will post that with our minutes, so everyone has the opportunity to see. Give up? Okay. So moving on to the Superintendent Report, I'm going to first turn it over to Principal Donnelly, who will introduce our fantastic. Donnelly, who will introduce our fantastic high school presentation.
Thank you. I'm pleased to introduce our current issues on global citizenship presentation for tonight. You'll be hearing the James Foley legacy curriculum tonight, and I'm excited for you to see this and share the work that they've done in class. Mrs. Murray DiCarma, I've got a privilege to watch it this morning as they were practicing, and this is amazing work that our kids have done. And I hope you enjoy this presentation. It makes you think a little bit about the moral courage that Jim Foley exhibited through his time in captivity in his life. So at this time, I'd like to ask the school board and S.A.U. administration, if you can please join the audience, and we'll get ready for our presentation.
Yes. Go ahead. 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 Yes.[807.29]
I really feel I can touch you. Eighteen of us have been held together in one cell, which has helped me. We've had each other to have endless long conversations about movies, trivia, sports. We've played games made up of scraps found in our cell. We have found ways to play checkers, chess, and Risk. And have had tournaments of competition, spending some days preparing strategies for the next day's game or lecture. The games and teaching each other have helped the time pass. They have been a huge help. We repeat stories and laugh to break the tension. I have had weak and strong days. We are so grateful when anyone is freed, but of course yearn for our own freedom. We try to encourage each other and share strength. We are being fed better now and daily. We have tea, occasional coffee. I have regained most of my weight lost last year. I think a lot about my brothers and sister. I remember playing Werewolf in the Dark with Michael and so many other adventures. I think of chasing Matty and T around the kitchen counter. It makes me happy to think of them. If there is any money left in my bank account, I wanted to go to Michael and Matthew. I am so proud of you, Michael, and thankful to you for happy childhood memories and to you and Christie for happy adult ones. And Big John, I enjoy visiting you and press in Germany. Thank you for welcoming me. I think a lot about Roro and try to imagine what Jack is like. I hope he has Roro's personality. And Mark, so proud of you too, bro. I think of you on the west coast and hope you were doing some snowboarding and camping. I especially remember us going to the Commonwealth in Boston together and our big hug after. The special moments keep me hopeful. Katie, so very proud of you. You are the strongest and best of us all. I think of you working so hard helping people as a nurse. I am so glad we texted just before I was captured. I pray I can come to your wedding, now I'm standing on Granny. Granny, please take your medicine, take walks, and keep dancing. I plan to take you out to Margaritas when I get home. Stay strong because I am going to need your help to reclaim my life. Jim. The Foley family first learned of Jim's death when media accounts posted the news and television channels started running the image of Jim in an orange jumpsuit in front of his executioners. Then the ISIS video hit the internet and Jim's death was weaponized as a tool of terror. The world had summoned the worst version of hate and violence it had to offer and swept it into the Foleys' lives. But in the days to come, the world also summoned a second current. And in this one, the risen support started pouring into their mailbox, spilling onto their porch in piles and bags for over a year. One woman wrote to Mrs. Foley every week for months and never included the return address, only her name, Jen. Mr. Foley told us about a letter they received that was addressed simply "The Foley Family USA" and made it to their doorstep. What we came to understand was that in response to Jim's death, the world also summoned the best it had to offer. Empathy, compassion, strength, goodness, community, faith, and love. And it was this outpouring that helped Diane start the James W. Foley Legacy Foundation within weeks of his death. The James W. Foley Legacy Foundation advocates for American hostages held abroad and serves as a source of protection, support, education, and funding for conflict journalists, as well as preserving Jim's legacy of moral courage. It has developed a journalist safety guide for use in undergraduate and graduate schools. And Diane Foley spearheaded the development of an interdepartmental agency at the FBI called the Hostage Recovery Fusion Cell, as well as working tirelessly in Washington DC to persuade government officials to prioritize the release of American hostages held abroad. The foundation also publishes a comprehensive report each year that updates and analyzes the state of American hostages worldwide. The foundation holds two important fundraisers each year. The James Foley Freedom Awards in Washington DC and the James Foley Freedom Run that takes place here in New Hampshire and virtually all across the world each October. You can explore the Foley Foundation website further in anticipation of such stations in the patch.
We often talk about the idea of ordinary until tested in our class. Mr. Foley used this phrase in another documentary to describe Jim. He said that Jim was an ordinary guy like you or me until tested. It was in captivity, deprived of his basic needs, tortured and terrorized, that he demonstrated the incredible selflessness and goodness that these fellow hostages recounted. Our class also connected this phrase, "ordinary until tested," to Diane Foley. Faced with the horror and hate of her son's death, she made the choice to give back to the world, to protect and support other families and work to improve our country. She was a nurse practitioner and mother of five until Jim's death transformed her into what she calls an accidental activist. In the first year after Jim's death, Diane was interviewed and photographed for an art installation and a book called Two Hundred Women. Some of you may be familiar with it as it came to Wolf for last year. In this exhibit, two hundred women from around the world who have had major impacts either globally, nationally, or locally were asked basic questions, one of which was, "Which single word do you most identify with?" The word that Diane chose was mercy. And even though this picture and interview were taken in the first year after Jim's death, you can see how mercy shaped her actions towards the men who killed her son. In January of 2018, years after Jim's death, two men from the terrorist group ISIS were captured by Kurdish Syrian democratic forces. These two men were Jim's executioners and a part of a group within ISIS known as the Beatles. All four members of the Beatles grew up in West London before joining ISIS. They were later transferred back to England after their capture. Diane Foley worked with both the US and British governments to form an agreement in which the two members of the Beatles, Alexander Cody and El Shafik, would be tried in the US as long as the death penalty was taken off the table. Diane met with one of Jim's murderers in person several times and wrote a powerful victim impact statement to be read at the trial. We believe that her statement was a way of showing the Beatles that although they killed Jim, his goodness lives on. Here is what she said. Jim would want the entire world to know about the horrific human rights crimes committed by ISIS by individuals like Alexander Cody and El Shafik. Their crimes of kidnapping, starvation, water boarding, torture, and rape have been heard by us all in this courtroom. In these instances, hatred truly overtook humanity. Jim would want us to know about the Syrians people's yearning for freedom that drew journalists like Stephen Staltloff and Jim to bear witness to their struggle and their immense suffering acutely felt by compassionate aid workers like Kayla Mueller and Peter Kisek. Jim would have wanted Alexander Cody and El Shafik held accountable in the United States of America where they could be afforded a fair and just trial with all the evidence and eyewitness testimony. Accountability is essential to deter hostage-taking and murder. Jim would want Cody and El Shafik to spend the rest of their lives incarcerated with time to reflect, pray, and make amends for their horrific deeds. Despite their horrific choices, Jim would want us to realize that they too have lost their families, loved ones, and their citizenship. I know that Jim's deepest pain was knowing how much his family and friends would suffer because of our loss of this loving, joyful presence in our lives, and we have suffered greatly and irrevocably. However, Jim would also want Alexander and El Shafik to know that their hateful crimes did not win. James Wright Foley lives on. Jim would say, "Alexander and El Shafik, you did not kill me. I am alive in my mother, father, my sister, and my brothers. I am alive in my family and friends, and their friends too. I am alive in the mercy and justice of this trial. I am alive in the brave testimonies that have been told on the witness stand to Judge Ellis and the jury. I am alive in all who dared to share their truth of what occurred in Syria from 2012 to 2015. I am alive in the dedication and dignity of the jury prosecuting attorneys, your defense attorneys, and Judge Ellis. I am alive in the journalists, reporters, and photographers who have shared details and images of your trial and judicial hearings around the world. I am alive in the stories of those I have told, those heard here in the courtroom and in the stories yet to be told. I am alive in all who aspire to have moral courage in whatever they choose to do. I am alive in Stephen Staltloff's Two Lives Foundation and the James W. Wright Legacy Foundation. I am alive and also promote journalist safety and the return of wrongful detainees and hostages around the world. I am alive in the families who yearn for the return of their loved ones and accountability for captors. In many ways, I am more alive than ever before. My name and the names of Stephen Staltloff, Kayla Mueller, and Peter Kisek are known around the world and inspire more courage in journalists, government officials, and compassionate people to put an end to the terror and international hostage-taking and to strengthen the armor of those who work in areas of conflict. I am alive in all people who have watched Jim, the James Foley story, and I continue to inspire others to live a life of purpose and compassion. I live and run with the thousands worldwide who join us in the annual Foley Freedom Run to remember all who have died to keep us free and to inspire more courage and radical empathy worldwide. Love is so much stronger than hatred. I pity you for choosing hate and for succumbing to a false theology because Islam is truly religion of mercy and peace. I hope that your time in prison will give you the space to reflect, pray, and repent, and perhaps even seek to make amends for the suffering you have afflicted on fellow human beings. The God I believe in will forgive even you. My hope is that your powerful conversion will bring healing to you, your families, and the world."
John and Diane Foley came to talk with our class this fall. They were open, gracious, and so supportive of our work. We were awed by their strength and took the heart of their message for us to make a difference in the world and the lives of others. Their visit inspired our most ambitious James Foley Legacy exhibit yet. From a small corner of the classroom on a single bulletin board, the exhibit grew to encircle Room 211 with interactive multimedia stations designed to highlight themes of mercy and moral courage and draw on visitors and have them participate and share in defining Jim's legacy in our school and the broader world. Here's a brief look at the different groups that participated in our exhibit experience. Our first exhibit opened with Global Perspectives Class. Global Perspectives is a dual AP Humanities course at Kingswood Regional High School that couples AP World History and AP Language and Composition. Students from this program taught by Ms. Raz and Ms. Mary DeCarmo watched Jim, the James Foley story, as they grouped together on a movie night and then did a gallery walk through the exhibit. The gallery walk focused on the themes of moral courage and mercy. They then used these themes in the Socratic seminar. Ms. Raz designed the gallery template and taught the Global Perspectives students about how to conduct the Socratic seminar.
We also opened up the exhibit to staff, faculty, and administration at Kingswood. We invited members of our school community from all different departments and made our classroom a place where our school could gather to learn more about James Foley's impact and reflect about how his legacy could further shape us at school. We also invited our families to an open house in the evening to share our project and bring Jim's story into the world outside of the classroom. Some of our parents were classmates of Jim and it was meaningful to them to see his memory living on in our work. And now we're here to share it with you and widen the circle of community created by this exhibit even further. In addition to curating exhibit that gathers community in a reimagined classroom, we also go out in the world and ran and walked at the James Foley Freedom Run. Katie Foley said that Jim always had a way of bringing people together and the Foley Run is a way for that legacy to live on. Our GWRSD community came together at the run in a big way this year. When the final results were tallied, the GWRSD Legacy Team had its finest showing to date. We had over sixty-five team members attending the run in Rochester this year in a record-breaking fundraising total that topped $2,000. Our community made a difference and gave critical support to a foundation that not only honors Jim's legacy, but also tirelessly advocates for American hostages held abroad and journalist safety. You can see more pictures from the run in the exhibit station in the back of the hall tonight. Also, our exhibit features an interactive timeline globe where you're able to place James Foley's life and death within the broader arc of history. The concept map shows and illustrates the complexity of the Syrian civil war. And a specially curated library of Jim's journalism is also located in the back. The music you'll be hearing is a song by Sting called "Empty Chair" that he wrote for James Foley's documentary. And we have included a version of a song by a course alumna as well. And finally, be sure to stop at the three Y's station and consider, why might this topic or question matter to me? Why might it matter to the people around me, like friends, family, school, or town? Why might it matter to the world? We would love for you to pick one Y and share your thoughts on Jim and his legacy. We are finishing our presentation with a part of the exhibit that had to stay back in our classroom. This is a collage of people from around the world who posted on social media with the hashtag #RememberJim. There are thousands of images like this found from Twitter, Reddit, and Tumblr. When we gathered these images, there were captions underneath stating where in the world they were from and their connections to Jim. For example, you may see a hand with the word "Loof" written across it, which was a nickname Jim called one of his friends. Or there is an image of a flag at half-mast on Lake Winnipesaukee because on the day Jim died, flags around the world were lowered. Our class also took a picture with that hashtag and joined this global community. We decided that the best way to present this to you tonight was through this short video. As you look at all these images, we ask you to think about how much of an impact one person from a small town in New Hampshire can have on the world. If you would like to take a picture to add to our collage tonight, we have an exhibit station set up for you to participate. And thank you all for giving us the opportunity to share Jim's legacy. You all can feel free to visit the back hall and see our presentation.
It was so funny because Thursday, I don't know.
Yeah, it's been wonderful, love it. Yeah, but a couple of days since that, Michelle, and you're like, "No, I'm good. I want to run around again."
I want to thank all of the students and your teacher, DeCarmo, for this fantastic presentation and all your work. So, thank you so much once again. We're going to transition into another presentation, Competency-Based Education. I encourage people to take a look around the room as you're viewing. I'd like to introduce Dr. Katie Hills, who is going to provide an overview of competency-based education requests from last month. And I can't think of a more knowledgeable person on the matter, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Hills. So, tonight I'm going to just be providing an overview of competency-based education. I will be, well, I'm not using my actual, but I'm going to start with an overview of the competency-based education, seven tenants of that. Looking at where our district is in this work and then ending with just some additional resources if you're interested. This is just a broad overview. Okay, is that better? Hopefully? Okay, good. So, competency-based education is a system. It's a system specifically of instruction. You know what? I'm a teacher. I can speak loudly. Okay. More specifically, it is a system of instruction, assessment, grading, and recording based on learning, demonstrating their application of the knowledge, skills, and work habits that they have learned. So, it is also about empowering our students. Really comes down to asking them and giving them opportunities to apply and transfer their learning in ways that will echo what will be asked of them in their college career or life in general. Regardless of what path you follow, this will mirror it. Strong implementation requires policies, pedagogy, structures, and culture that also supports every learner in developing these essential skills, knowledge, and dispositions. There is no single model for CBE. We live in New Hampshire, local control, so there's no single model. But there are seven common features. And these seven features, which I'll explain in a moment, are from the Aurora Institute. And these were adapted into this particular graphic, very powerful, by NHLI, Hampshire-Look. So, the first is empowering students. Learning sciences, research, and the experience of many of our educators and probably the experience of most of us tells us that students learn more and are more deeply engaged when they are able to make important decisions about their own learning. They also show greater engagement when they have the opportunity to create and apply knowledge rather than just receiving it passively or repeating it back. So, moving away from the memorization to more of the application. Creating and applying knowledge mirrors real-life tasks in our jobs, in our lives. We are applying the skills and knowledge that we have learned rather than just reciting back basic facts and demonstrating basic skills. We're also integrating them together, the skills we've learned, the work habits or dispositions that we've learned or acquired, and the knowledge that we acquired. So, for example, for this presentation, I've had to integrate knowledge about competencies, about technology, putting together a presentation, oral speaking skills. I've had to have an understanding of my audience and adapt my presentation based on that. And then our work habits or dispositions, just time management, organization, collaborating with others. Those are all things that have had to come together for this presentation. So, what we do in our real lives is integration, not anything isolation. The second of the seven is meaningful balance of assessment. Assessment is not simply about grading. It must be meaningful and empowering, and it must provide information for next steps for both the student and his or her teacher. So, we will be learning, or we have learned, depending on the grade range, about the balance between summative assessment, which is assessing your learning or a student's learning at the end of a given period. Can they transform, can they transfer, can they translate their knowledge? And formative assessment, which is assessing it during the learning period or learning process to determine where a student is, where they need to go next, and giving them support in how to get there. So, in a CBE model, assessments don't look all the same. It's not always a traditional sit-down, multiple-choice test. There is a place for that type of assessment, but it is also important to have assessments that reflect real-life learning experiences and experiences that mirror what they're doing in life, college, and career. The P is for personalized pacing. And this means that students progress on it based on evidence that they are proficient in a given competency, not simply based on the fact that they sat in a class for a given number of hours or days. We know not every student masters a concept in the same timeframe or in the same ways. Students in this model have provided evidence of mastery when their assessment is demonstrating the application or transfer of essential knowledge and skills. In competency-based schools, the primary goal is deeper learning, not faster learning. So, it does not mean that we give them a checklist of learning tasks and they simply go through it as fast as they can or with very little engagement and just simply check it off. It also doesn't mean that we give them all the same path and some students just race there faster and some go slower. Varied pacing means that students who can demonstrate proficiency in certain standards early are encouraged to engage in ways that lead to greater depth of knowledge or multiple ways of demonstrating their competency. Other students may need additional time or different instructions, different activities to become proficient in a competency, and we need to allow them that. Our district still has some meaningful work to do around this and how this looks in our classrooms and in our schools. classrooms and in our schools. On-time support is the O. And this means that we are providing learning opportunities that are targeted to students' current level of competency and having strategies as educators to know when and where there are gaps in student learning and addressing them quickly so that students can get back on track and don't get disengaged or terrorized. We have known for years that differentiation is essential, and if I surveyed everyone in this room, I suspect that we would see that there are a variety of learning learners, a variety of learning types, and that in any given topic, there are those who have strengths and weaknesses. And so, CBE, or competency-based education, really focuses on providing support to help students overcome these weaknesses to become competent in any area. If we think again of the real world, modeling the real world, doctors, mechanics, IT specialists, lawyers, they all provide differentiated support to their patients, to their customers, to their clients. We all go to the doctor, we get different feedback. I always get feedback that it needs to be healthier, but in different ways. So, that's the real, the real world is differentiated, and we need to mirror that. W is for wayfinding pathways, and this means that students can learn and demonstrate mastery in different ways or through different pathways. At the smaller scale, this could happen in a classroom. You might be giving students different learning activities to help them understand a concept. They might be demonstrating their competency in different ways. One student may give an oral presentation. One student might write some sort of a written presentation, and some students might do something completely different. They're all showing competence, depending on the competency. At the larger scale, this might mean varied graduation paths. They're all demonstrating competency in disparate competencies, but one student may pursue them through the length of a train. Another might go through the length of an art, art background, and still another may choose to pursue the competencies, competencies through an academic on this track. E is ensuring equity. The National Equity Project states in a quote, "Educational equity means that each child receives what he or she needs to develop to his or her full academic and social potential." Working toward equity involves ensuring equally high outcomes for all learners in our educational system, removing the predictability of success or failure that currently correlates with any social or cultural factor, interrupting inequitable practices, examining biases, our all included, and creating inclusive and culturally responsive school environments for adults and children. And finally, discovering and cultivating unique gifts, talents, and interests that everyone possesses. So, really making sure that every learner feels valued and recognized. Finally, the seventh tenant is rigorous common expectations. This overlaps with, as an equity strategy, so that different students are not held to different standards, which we know sometimes happens across zip codes, across populations, or across settings. Our expectations go beyond knowledge and basic skills. We expect, as the world expects, our students to integrate, apply, and transfer knowledge, skills, and dispositions, all three of those, into new contexts. This is what colleges and employers in life will ask of them. Finally, these expectations must be explicit, transparent, measurable, and transferable. Students, just like adults, need to know what is expected of them in order to reach those expectations. And they, with teacher guidance, must be able to measure their progress along the way and make those adjustments as necessary or get the necessary supports to meet those expectations. So, why is this important? Well, I mean, of course, it has been law, it's been a law since 2018, 2008, excuse me. But more importantly, it's best practice. It focuses on equity and making education equitable. It promotes deeper learning. It focuses on making sure all students learn. It's personalized and engaging, and most importantly, it mirrors and thus better prepares our students for college, careers, and life. And I wanted to show you this map. In 2012, this, this was a map of states with competency-based state policy on the books. And you can see that it was somewhat of an even split of those that had some level, either emerging, updeveloping, or advanced, and those that have no policies. Seven years later, in 2019, you can see that all but Wyoming has competency-based education policy, state policy. And New Hampshire, in both cases, has been an advanced state. So, this isn't just some wingnut thing that Katie dropped up one night. This is, this is real, because it's best practice. So, where are we in this process? We're a little bit different, depending on what grade levels you're talking about or what grade ranges, but we're already a good ways along this journey, particularly in the elementary and middle schools and moving along in the high school as well. So, this is a K through eight roadmap. We have, early on, developed district competencies and K through eight grade-level competencies. It started just prior to my coming on. They identified, clarified, and implemented work habits. So, again, things like perseverance, being respectful, cooperation, some of those life skills that transfer across all content areas. We've aligned the K through eight curriculum, so the knowledge and the skills, and we've aligned with the best practices around grading and recording. So, we adopted a standards-based or competency-based recording system called Jump Rope. We adjusted to a scale, a one through four scale, but a scale that was equitable, and we separated out those work habits. You can have a student who is, who tries their best and perseveres and cooperates in time and respectful, but just doesn't necessarily get the academic target. And you can have the kids on the other end as well. You can have the students who get it. They know it. They could teach it on day one, but they're not always showing perseverance. They're not always cooperating. So, both are valuable, and it's important to build up. Our next steps, K through eight, is we are working, I'm working with the K through eight teachers during after-school sessions this year. We're refining the components of our curriculum, especially in light of what we learned in the pandemic. We're digging into the underlying standards to better understand who those require knowledge and skills, the depth of knowledge, what really do students need to do and what not. And this will set us up for our work in assessment and instruction, which is our last major leg and one that's already underway in the area. I'm going to invite Paul Fennellari, the Curriculum Project Manager up at, here at Kingswood, to talk a little bit about what he's done in his first year and almost a half at high school.
Good evening. So, as Katie said, we are in year two of our project work around curriculum coordination here at Kingswood High School. Some of the things that we have accomplished so far, we have developed in nearly every academic department in the building articulated competencies, which come in the form of a district competency map, and I'm happy to say that most every department has that completed at this point. We have provided extensive training to faculty, staff, academic coordinators, department heads, teacher leads, anyone and everyone who we could gather for these trainings around curriculum, construction, and assessment, some best practices in those areas. This year, we have moved to phase two of our project work. And year two was really focused on aligning and unpacking our curricular expectations, particularly K through two assessment, how teachers are assessing, what tools they are using, some deep self-reflection on their assessment practices. And also, we are in the exploratory phase right now of implementing or possibly introducing some alternative pathways to implement here at Kingswood High School. We are very early on in that process, so we're just kind of in the exploratory phase. Next steps is to continue to align, refine, and create our assessments around competency-based best practices. So, I'm very hopeful with the work that we've done thus far. The teachers have been phenomenal with their efforts and really keeping an open mind and really generating some good conversation around competency-based expectations here at the high school. Thank you.
So, with the, again, as Paul shared, we are still in the process of working through this, doing some of that behind-the-scenes work. And a big piece of that is the rolling out to families to come, and that sort of that implementation phase, preparing for it and actually doing it. With the Curriculum Project Manager position at the high school, we estimate that we'll be ready to implement in about two years, over the 24, 25 school year. Without this position and the ability to be in the building, working daily with the teachers during their prep periods, during after-school meetings, we estimate that it will take an additional, like, two years before rolling out. I wanted to talk briefly about Portrait of a Learner and our Equity Team, which sort of overlays all of this work and integrates with it. The Portrait of a Learner is a collaborative process to define the competencies and attitudes necessary for student success. It's going to require input from our community, from our students, from their families, from staff, from administrators, everybody. And the resulting vision that we create will become the district's North Star, Bogart School Operation at Bogart Pedagogy. It's really the North Star. We have a new newly-formed portrait committee that represents people from across the district, all towns and all positions, or a variety of positions in the district, and they'll be tasked with leading this Portrait of a Learner work. So far, we've attended several sessions, and while we're still learning ourselves about the full, the full portrait, we've already gained a deeper understanding of the process and developed goals, initial action steps, and the timeline for work. And dovetailing with this is the District Equity Team, which will hopefully grow in capacity to become a task force, and it has started exploring concepts relating to equity, inclusion, and diversity as it relates to education. So, this again will overlay the work and embrace the work that we're doing in curriculum instruction. Finally, if you are interested in learning more about this, this is just a brief overview. I could, I could go on for days. There will be updated curriculum-based education resources on our website, on our public website soon. It's going through some updates after, after, from the pandemic. We also have the Aurora Institute. It's a public site, and they are sort of the be-all and all. They are the, they are the master's competency institutions. You can pick up information on the Aurora Institute site. And moving forward, you will be seeing student presentations at the beginning of each board meeting where students will showcase grade-level competencies and how they're meeting it or how they're progressing toward the end. So, for example, this evening, you saw the James Foley students demonstrated two of their competencies, which you see within one about communicating, and they did a wonderful job. They were communicating through artifacts, they were communicating orally, they were communicating in writing. And you also saw them evaluating, synthesizing, applying, and extralizing feature pieces of history into a very beautiful, convoluted presentation. So, finally, if you're, if you're interested in learning more about competency-based education and specifically in our work in it, you can always reach out to me. I'm happy to meet. I'm very passionate about this, probably more than you probably want to know, but if you care if you want to. Questions?
Katie, the Jump Rope, is that software only applicable to the elementary, or would we have to go for more technology for the?
It does, it does span high school. We would be, just, we want to do our due diligence and explore other options that potentially are out there. I mean, one of the benefits is that students' families know it from the UDL curriculum. We would explore other options.
Do we currently use a UDL framework for our curriculum design or are we using UBD here? And if so, how does that align with work or plans designed to be?
So, I can't speak exactly to the timeline, but I know prior to my arrival, I think it was with, it was Kathy McKay brought in UBD, and there are districts that are still using it. And it's a, it's a form of streamlining it. It's, it's again, looking at the competencies and the underlying essential standards. There are more standards that we could cover in depth. So, what are the essential standards? And then working backwards, what do those standards actually address? The knowledge and the skills from that? And then looking at assessment and building backwards all the back to our session. What is UBD? Oh, UBD is Understanding by Design. It is a model or a template for designing curricula, UBD is all the actual.
My other question is relative to the Portrait of a Learner. There's verbal information about that. So, we got from you, Caroline, a letter about kind of what the process will be, but how do we know who's on that committee? Will there be people looking at, at the committee? Or do we all know about that?
I can just, so, it's, for everyone at the board, and we have, who needs that? I shared it in previous meetings, but as far as sharing updates, that will be ongoing. So, as Katie mentioned, we'll have UBD presentations at the beginning of each school or in the middle of the students at the school. Again, that will be something that I'll be recording how, again, with your perspective to, you know, my goals and certainly this year, but it's not quite finished this year. So, it's going to be ongoing this year.
I have a question I could mention, a lot of parents are going to ask, because I could imagine what my parents would ask, and how, how do you measure like GPA? And how do you like, because obviously there's schools that are going to want transfers, and you're like, going to expect some kind of numbers, being able to measure our students who are competing for a limited number of spots in secondary education institutions to other students from the country. So, how does that kind of work?
Because we are really looking at two worlds. For those students who go on, as well as the K through 12 system, when we're looking at platforms like high school, we want to find one that allows, it's a higher, it allows you to, it allows you to assume a competency-based side, but it'll also allow you to report out in ways that the college higher ed is looking for. So, that doesn't necessarily go away. It's just, it's, we need to have like conversations around it and explore it. Thank you for that presentation, Dr. Hills. Oh, she's still here, good. You're going to stick around? Okay, good. Thank you. Okay. Next, and superintendent's report, Wolfro Trolley Company agenda item. I have the pleasure of bringing this proposal to you. Wolfro Trolley Company would like to continue their service out of the Art Center lot. Kathy Fairman, I believe is here. Welcome. Thank you for coming, if the board had any questions. But it is the same proposal as last summer, when school is not in session.
I'll make the motion, Jack, for discussion.
Okay, motion by Brody. Anyone else?
Second.
Second by Jim. Okay, Brody?
My one question is how can we encourage more students to participate? I thought that was the one issue. That was noting the letter, and I'm wondering if she has any suggestions for how?
I guess we have to do a better job getting the word out, don't we? So, we have some different ideas about how we may be able to have been talking with different businesses in town that employ the, a lot of students that are here or students who are in college or whatever. And we're trying to come up with some ideas, and we hope we'll be able to come back with those. So, depend a little bit on how the whole thing works together. So, there's still pieces to go together, but the first thing we need is permission to use your facility. Again, we very much appreciate having that opportunity in the past and your support on that. So, we'll be coming back with ideas on how we can hopefully get more participation in general. general. We'll see how that works. I also have to just thank you so much. I'm so glad I was later on the agenda here. It's been a wonderful evening. And the James Foley thing was just magnificent. And then this explanation about this concept, I love it. It looks great. So it's wonderful to see that work. You know, and these guys over here. You know, it's challenging. It is challenging today in so many ways and so many things, but I come out here fit with my heart, full saying, my goodness, when we can have a James Foley walk out of here and we can have students like this talking about it today, then that's wonderful. Nothing else seems terribly important. But thank you so much for my support, and I'll go back out there with my little project and working with the other members of the committee to see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think maybe toward the end of our school year, maybe we can promote it at some of our school board meetings as well, talk it up. You know, that might help a little bit to get people more involved.
Yes, I did come in one day and walked throughout the school lunch thing and handed out, but I think I've got to hand out more than a card to say call me. I think I better be handing out passes.
That's probably a good idea.
You know, and see, and we just got to find a way how to make it work. But we're all working together on it, working with these guys too. So we'll see how it all comes out. We'll be back with more information as we go through the town with the other pieces in the town. So thank you again so much.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kathy? Okay, all those in favor of approving the Wolfboro Trolley request to use the Art Center again this coming summer for their, I'm going to say park and ride, if that's an appropriate way. All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Wuzai. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item superintendent's report is snow days. It's been the case that the Governor Wentworth Regional School District has had one real weather-related snow day at the superintendent's discretion, after which there will be remote learning. This was voted upon by the board as part of the 2223 school calendar. So far this year, we have had one delayed opening and two full day cancellations. The first full day cancellation on December 16th was due to several inches of snow that accumulated across the region. It was per my discretion to not have remote learning that day. The second cancellation, December 23rd, was due to a cyclone that involved wind gusts reaching over 60 miles per hour. We suspected remote learning would be at the least inconsistent for our staff and students. As a result of this storm, there were hundreds of thousands of families who lost power across the state, some for several days. We did not and could not engage in remote learning that day. We learned from the pandemic that remote teaching and learning is difficult for students to receive and for staff to deliver. Parents who may have the ability to stay home with their children have the challenge to keep their children engaged, although they may be on deck for shoveling, plowing, or working from home. This is true for both remote learning and the blizzard bags from years past. Remote learning is particularly difficult for teachers who have students to teach and ensure that their own children are simultaneously learning. Each year, we have fewer and fewer cancellations due to inclement weather. For better or for worse, the reduced number of canceled school days has less of an impact on the end of the school year. We have the opportunity to revisit the last day of school with the board should we exceed the number of days allowed on the calendar. This is possible by satisfying the number of hours the days students are in school. I suspect we will experience more inclement weather days over the next few months during which engaging in remote learning may be unreliable. This would put us in a situation where the superintendent, myself, and transportation director are not only considering whether to hold school, but also whether requiring remote learning is feasible. So it is for these reasons I bring this agenda item to the board tonight. The fact that it would be a gift to our students, parents, caregivers, and staff to release from remote learning, that I propose to the board tonight that we eliminate the remote learning as a requirement when school is canceled due to inclement weather. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I think the, you know, the issue always becomes when you have a snow day, there are a lot of areas in the Governor Wentworth School District that do lose power quite often. And remote learning doesn't seem to be a feasible process. So I really encourage if we need to add snow days like we used to in the past to the end of the school year, that's probably the appropriate thing to do. But we let the superintendent have the discretion to call a snow day and eliminate the remote learning option. Jim? Just, Jim, go ahead.
Just a question. Just for clarification, are you asking that you would have the option of still declaring a remote learning day? Or would you say, well, policy will be a snow day is a snow day?
Well, there is no policy specific to that. There is policy and the RSA that the superintendent is responsible for the safety of all students. But as far as remote learning is concerned, yes, I'm proposing that we no longer have the requirement for remote learning when school is canceled.
I'll make that motion for discussion.
Hope that answers your question.
Stephanie made the motion. Brody seconded it. Okay, so now we're open for discussion.
I'll respond to your response. I didn't really mean to use policy as such a strong word, but I guess I was really just a thought process here. Is it that we're just going to get rid of remote learning days pretty much altogether?
I believe that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
That was the intent, yes. Brody?
I'd like to comment. I remember as a student, I believe it was fifth grade, when they introduced the blizzard bags. And that was before they were even required to be done online. We used to send this home with paper, and we were packed with those and gave us the bags, the old, the excess bags that they could sell to the energy shelves. And I remember how depressing it was, the first two or three snow days to have to be inside most of the day, because the remote learning always took longer than the regular school day, at least for me. And it was just, you know, I yearn, those and the big cookies we used to be able to sell before the federal government stopped us from selling the big cookies in the cafeteria, those two things, they got to bring it back.
That's true. I have no control over the cookie.
And so finally have control to have the traditional snow days. I'm so happy. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, who else wants to comment?
We have a question.
Okay, yes.
With the idea that school year was pushed out into June, all of our buildings now have air conditioning for students?
It's in the process. I guess that's part of the third funding that's available, that all the schools will be. Yes, R2 funding.
Will be.
Yes, they will. Maybe not by the end of this year necessarily. The funds have to be expended by the end of 2024, I believe. So between now and the end of 2024, all of our buildings should be fully air-conditioned and fully heated properly and all of that. So yes.
So I, my comment is that instead of prescribing 180 days, we're going to kind of go back to hours. If we, just so in case, you know.
If we need a waiver from the state, we could certainly do that.
Yep. Okay. It's just, I, yeah, I guess my thought is, and I will support the vote, but we were always like, oh, we got to get the kids out because they got to work. That's why we did, that was like the whole thing. And now the teachers did an enourment amount of work over, you know, however many years to make this feasible. And now we're just going, eh, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, well, you know, I think, no, no, I think the issue basically is the remote learning, when it had to be remote learning, was done very, very well by our teachers, as best they could do it. This is when you have a blizzard or storms, to have a remote day when half the district is out of power doesn't make a lot of sense. So that's really, we make it a snow day if we need to add days to the end of the school year, we certainly will. And hopefully, like Tom said, all of the buildings will be fully air-conditioned, so that will be a much more comfortable process for the kids. Anyone else?
Just a question. What if there is a closing of one school in the district? You know, it's been the case before where like the high school complex has had to be shut down for a certain reason, you know, and those students have a remote learning day. Will that still be part of this?
That's really not included in this motion, so right now we're just on this, such emergency closers, I think will have to be handled on an individual school basis.
Before we vote, can you just read the motion again, because we're all on the same page?
Well, I'm not sure. I guess the motion would be that, the motion would be to eliminate the requirement for remote learning on snow days, and the snow day will be considered a snow day.
Okay. That's very interesting. Thank you.
Hey, are we all set to vote?
Is that the, is that the inclement weather opposed to snow day?
Well, okay, well, snow days or inclement weather that makes transportation or students to school dangerous. Kathy, can you add some of that to the? Okay.
Yes.
All right, we'll get that written down properly. Thank you. Now are we ready to vote? Okay. All right, all in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Wuzai. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, 2023, 2024 school calendar. We tabled this from last month to gather more information. I'm pleased to bring you a slightly edited proposal here in your packet. We learned that there will be no voting on November 7th. Therefore, we shifted parent teacher conferences to be during an early release on November 8th and a full day on the 9th. So this satisfies several requirements of our CBA as well as seems to be the best plan for students, because there isn't a lengthy amount of time when students are not in school. So that in November, they're here for two and a half days, then they're here for a full week, November 13th through 17th, and then they're still here for two days prior to Thanksgiving. So I work extensively with our association, and I think this is a really good collaboration, and it satisfies what we need to require for professional development before school, during the school year, while still keeping our buildings open for voting in all of our towns.
Okay, motion to accept by Jim?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, Brody second. Go ahead, Brody.
Charlene has something to say.
Charlene?
So am I correct that, hello?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm trying to address you, but that's okay.
Oh, thank you.
So am I correct that we make sure that this didn't run afoul of a past RSA that requires observance of Veterans Day on Veterans Day proper, which is November 11th?
Yeah, Veterans, and that's a good question, because Veterans Day is being observed federally on the 10th, Friday the 10th. I don't know why, just like New Year's Day was federally recognized on Monday the 2nd, which again, I didn't understand. But the federal building.
But we are observing the day off.
Yeah, we're observing the federal holiday on the 10th.
I did see that, and I just wanted to make sure that because our state legislature doesn't always follow what the federal destination is in terms of, I think specifically only for veterans. So we check that and it's all good.
Yeah, and this is the first time in my life, I think, that Veterans Day isn't officially federally on the 11th.
Yeah.
I don't, again, I'm not sure why the federal government's decided that everyone has to have a long weekend, but I guess they have to.
Okay, I just, I'm fine with having the day off. I just see that there are some issues. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Are the half-days, I think there's one on October 18th, April 3rd, are those half-days for in-service in the afternoon?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And then typically graduations, we have like it's either Friday night or a Saturday, depending on the weather, and guys, since you're here, can you speak to this, if we should include that on the calendar?
It is listed in the key.
Yeah. It just has the 14th.
So tentative on the 14th as the Friday, so that if there is, it needs to be postponed, they have Saturday morning as the second option, and then Saturday evening as the third option.
In regards to graduation, I think that whether it's on Friday or Saturday, I surveyed parents' class, that graduation class that year, rather than something else, because they have the most vested in parents, families, students. I'd like to make sure that it works out best for those families, that whether people travel from just a few hours away, or for procrastination. On Friday, we're asking them to take extra day off. That's my opinion. I've seen the error of my way since I voted the other way. I agree with Brody on this, but I could be wrong. So that's why I'd like to see a survey of parents regarding.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Well, I think the, I think the idea of setting the calendar this early gives families plenty of time, because this is, this June, this is June of the following year, they have a year and a half to plan their Friday night trips. So I think it's.
Your assumption is that it should be on Friday. I'm saying it maybe should be on Friday, or maybe on Saturday, and I think it should be left up to parents and guardians of graduate classes.
I guess for me, we've been having this since we moved, we are doing this, I mean, we've had graduation at 10 o'clock on Saturday for eons, and then the pandemic came, and we went to this kind of, maybe Friday night, maybe Saturday morning. We've kind of been having the same discussion, I think, for like three plus years now regarding Friday night versus we always knew the kids were going to graduate on the field or in the Art Center Saturday morning at 10 o'clock. So I just, for me, it's like, why are we not going back to Saturday at 10 o'clock that we did for forever, 30 plus, as long, I mean, I graduated 1990 with it. And all of the kids, and now, ever since the pandemic, it's been this really wishing watching uncomfortable feeling for parents and, you know, family members, either it's Friday night or it's Saturday morning. I don't know. It just, it makes me feel angst every time you have this conversation regarding graduation.
All right, hang on a second. Guy, do you have any input at all with this?
I guess so. Go back, traditionally, I mean, Kingswood that we've known always graduated on Saturday morning at 10. Prior to that, though, in the 60s and 70s, Kingswood graduated in the evening, Friday evenings, right out here where the bus loop is now. So it hasn't always been on Saturday.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, I can't.
One of the reasons, one of the things that, being the person who has to make the decision whether it's inside or outside, and then get on the phone and let parents know that they now have to choose whether their grandparents come to the graduation or not, because we can't fit everybody in the Art Center. So giving, the idea of giving parents a Friday night to start with, and then Saturday morning is that every family member that wants to attend can attend. So that is why we've gone to this. The pandemic led us there, no question about it. But that's a tough decision for families to make a decision on who can come and who can't, because we can only give out so many tickets to be able to sit inside the Arts Center.
But we did Zoom and stuff before. I mean, I can say we, if you could be present, we had video to be like direct feed into the Art Center. I mean, we made accommodations for it. I mean, I had to sit in, you know, the gym one time. I just, I don't know. It just, for me, it was very con- I just, I, I don't know, I just, for me, it was very concrete that it was going to happen that way and we made accommodations that worked so people could view, you know, live stream and every year, kind of probably three years now, we have the same challenge, you know, and I'm not saying it's easy, guy, I'm just saying for me, it's always this angst around graduation, whether it's Friday or Saturday. At least Saturday, we knew what it was and I know it might have been hard choices for families, but they knew they, they made the expectations there.
Just one more thing that I might add and then obviously we'll do whatever, whatever you're grateful. And also it's a cost too, because when we go inside, we're set up for outside graduation. So we have to pay for that setup, whether we use it or not. And if we are, the chances of us being rained on three different times are very small.
Yeah.
Especially in June, you don't tend to get three days of rain, like at night.
Yeah.
So we know we're, we're, we're paying for it and we're using it.
Yeah.
And that was one of the things that I can remember sitting inside for an art center graduation, looking out at the football field with a full stage setup and chairs that we have to pay for that we can't use. So-
Was that a rainy day though?
What's that?
Was that a rainy day?
It was.
Were you glad to be inside?
I probably would have graduated on Friday night, it was sunny that day. I've been principal 15 years and we've had two graduations inside.
Yeah, no, it's not a tough, tough task. I just, we always have the same conversation.
What I'm talking about is on whether graduation is inside or outside. I mean, the art center is going to continue to be the fall, if it rains, got to go there and stuff is paid for anyways. It's just a matter of, a lot of people, they have the most easy day for them, for families that are traveling. Just my thought.
Well, I think the, I think the, certainly the advantage of Friday as an option gives us basically three options, the way we set it up. If it's, if Friday is a clear night and we have graduation, we have a graduation. If it's raining, Saturday is going to be clear, we have a Saturday graduation. Well, anyway, there we go. Graduation could, could be Saturday night then. So, you know, it does give us a little more option. Just Saturday, then it's if it's raining Saturday, it's raining Saturday and we do it inside. And then that's just the way it is and we limit the number of people that can go into the art center room. Yeah, but, but Friday night gives us the option of not having to do that if it's a nice Saturday, nice day on Friday. Plus it also could be 110 degrees out on Saturday morning too, which has been in the past. I've been on the stage a couple of times at 110 degrees, but what do I, Julie, Julie, how, Brody?
I know what you mean. I want to reiterate what I said when we previously discussed this and I was the only one who voted no to having graduation on Friday. I'm sorry, Guy, but I had very strong opinions. I graduated on a Saturday in the March. My brother did, as you mentioned, there were only two rain days. I think the consistency matters to parents that have multiple kids that go through the school district. I think working people who might be related to the family members, if they have to work on a Friday, it can be a loss of income. And I also think we're missing, and I bet, I'm pretty sure I mentioned this in our Crescent Lake meeting previously, is the elephant in the room, which is Sunday. There's no reason why the rain day can't be Sunday, which is how it was in the past. It's my understanding, or you would plan for a Saturday afternoon once the rain disappears. So, I mean, I heard church and I understand, but it's a graduation, graduation happens once, mass happens every week. I said that as a Catholic, goes mass every weekend. I'll just go to confession and apologize for not confessing to the mass because I have to go to a kid's graduation. That's just part of life. You make, you set priorities at home. So that's, that was my opinion then. I understood why the board made this decision and I supported the decision moving forward. We're going to reconsider. I totally agree with Tom and I kind of trumpeted the horn previously and I was told, well, no.
Do we want to limit, eliminate Friday as an option and go strictly with Saturday?
Can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
When we, when we went, for the first time in decades, recently in the last year or so, decided to move graduation to Friday evening, why, what was the rationale for that? I don't remember.
It's because of the pandemic. We had like, it's because the kids had, we had to like bowl the kids in graduation because we had COVID, right? We had like two days of, oh, and then, yeah, but then they had to take photos and stuff like, like you guys, anyone with long-
Charlene, because we were still in the midst of the pandemic.
Yeah.
And in that way, everybody could be outside. So if you just said it was Saturday morning at 10, we would have had to go inside. We didn't want to bring everybody inside the building when we could do a graduation outside. So we set up for Friday night and then moved to Saturday if it rained and Saturday evening. So we were guaranteed to do graduation outside.
Yeah.
And then it led into, from my perspective, is not letting parents choose to bring anybody they wanted to, because graduation is going to be outside. So they want to bring two sets of grandparents if they could do that.
But the first year of the pandemic, the setup was at Castle in the Clouds, right?
We did two days of diplomas.
Here though, with the diploma, sorry?
We did two days of diplomas here every five minutes for two days.
Yeah.
And then we went to Castle in the Clouds for outdoors, graduation was filmed and played outdoors.
Okay, but it was, it was in the parking lot and it was, weren't the number of cars limited to?
No. Oh, yes, each family had, had, I believe, I'm trying to remember now. I think each family had one car.
Okay, so, so during that first year of the pandemic, you were handing out diplomas in person here for two days?
Yep.
And then had sort of a culminating event, a castle in the clouds or something, you know, some of the festivities and whatnot?
We did a parade from here after the diplomas on Saturday to Castle in the Clouds. We did diplomas from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on every five minutes on Friday and then from 7:00 was, I think, 9:00 noon time on Saturday. The parents had a time that they could come, they could, I would announce their name and we'd walk across the stage in front of the art center, parents could take pictures, just like we did out on the football field. That's, that was two day events.
Okay, so now that we're not under those, those same protocols, what you're saying we should have it Friday night just to have an extra option in case it rains?
I'm saying we're having it on Friday night to have extra options because it rains so that way parents do not, families do not have to choose who can come inside, who can see their, their person graduating in person outside at the football field. Because if we move inside, we have to limit the amount of people that can attend.
So are you saying that you think the odds are better for a nice Friday evening with no rain than for a Saturday morning with no rain?
I say, it's not necessarily, it's about the multiple chances to do it outdoors. That's why we start on Friday evening and we go Saturday morning and then we go Saturday evening. Fortunately, we haven't had to, but-
Okay, can I, can I modify the, the motion?
Well, can we just rescind it?
Well, let's, I'd like to modify the motion to approve the calendar with Friday, Saturday, Friday and Saturday as tentative graduation dates and to survey the parents and students on which day they prefer. But that way, that way we can approve the rest of the calendar and when we get the survey back, we can modify the last-
Would you add Sunday as a back of the?
Personally, I wouldn't.
All right, we'll, 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 we'll do that.
I think that was top of the list.
And I'll, and I'll, and I'll accept that.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to accept the calendar with the change for adding Saturday as an optional day or an additional day for potential graduation and then we will survey the parents and students to determine whether they prefer a Friday night or a Saturday graduation.
I have one player.
Dr. Jim, Dr. Jim first. Go ahead, Dr. Jim. Well, the- Well, now that, now that we have snow days, it may have to show. But right now, the last, the last, oh, it's the 18th. It may have to go to the 24th if they have a long lot of snow days.
Will the last day be a half day in regards to what it is?
Yes.
Yes.
So that means how long is the period for the half day? Should we clarify that the last day would be a half day?
Well, right now, right now it's scheduled for that, it would be scheduled for, this is next year, so it's nothing to do with this year's stuff.
We guarantee a half day, it's the last day.
Yeah. Tentative, well, okay, we should, maybe should change the wording, tentative last day of school.
Last day, well, it does say, does say June 18th plus a school half day.
Potential make up days is right there in the box.
Right, potential.
The potential make up days are in the box, right, so.
We can add the word tentative.
Yeah, that's all.
Sure.
Tentative half day.
Tensive last day. Definite half day.
Well, not on the 18th, no. It won't definitely, you say it won't definitely be a half day.
Well, whenever the last day is, will be a half day.
How are we doing on the calendar here? All right, let, let's take a moment on the calendar in favor of approving the calendar as presented with the addition of Saturdays as a potential graduation day and the survey to the parents and students to determine which is the appropriate day is the motion on the floor. And, and we'll add tentative to the last day of school, whenever that should be. How's that? All right, all in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair of the House as well. I think we have a calendar, at least for now.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item, field trip updates. This is simply information. I need to inform the board of overnight and out of state trips, so that is in your packet. We have Glenn group going to Camp Brookwoods. We have the robotics team going to a robotics competition. We have Effingham Grade 5 going to the ecology school in Sacramento. All for your information.
The only question I have is the trip for the robotics team to Rhode Island and I see three chaperones, is one of those female or not? Jim, is?
Uh, Jim.
Prior to that.
Is, okay, that's prior?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we had a female to, you know, chaperone or-
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm saying the, of the major trip, there's one chaperone or nine kids doing it.
I think that doesn't include parents. I think that is the staff member.
It just says number of chaperones, one.
Right.
And it's, and it's local Camp Brookwoods, right?
Exactly.
Okay, we'll, we'll double check on that.
I can double check on that, thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to the Kingswood Regional Middle School School Resource Officer agenda item. This is for the board's discussion.
Okay, we're, we're now in the process of discussing the SRO warrant, a potential warrant. I'd open the floor to any input from the board?
I had, I listened to the testimony. I appreciate it. I had, I had a couple of questions regarding some of it and would it be appropriate to ask them now?
Yes.
Oh, just a few of the questions, I guess. My first thing is we mentioned, and it was a pretty, when I first heard it, it was a pretty compelling statistic, which is we have more cases for our student population than the rest of Carroll County combined. But when I thought about it, Carroll County only has one other SRO that works in the high school and that's because there's only one other high school in our district, sorry, in our county, and that's Kent.
Yes, so that's, that's-
Oh, and Multonboro has one too, that's right.
Yeah, but that's for every police department, every town, not just Kingswood, UCL, that county, with all the other, to include every police department, State Police, Sheriff's Office, anybody writing any petition.
But wouldn't it still, but Conway would be the one that would write the majority of this because typically the juvenile, it's things that would happen at school, am I completely mistaken?
Well, no, you're talking about, yes, I'm talking, you're right, Conway too, but we beat Conway. But I'm just saying, police departments in general can write juvenile petitions. If it, if this didn't occur at the school, you know, this will get into the petitions. So you take all those juvenile petitions that any law enforcement agency can write within Carroll County and Wolfboro PD has to honor all those charges.
How does Wolfboro PD compare to other member towns in our school district? Do you have those numbers?
I do not.
Do you have the raw numbers for, obviously it would be probably mostly Multonboro, Conway and then all those other towns and Multonboro obviously has its own school district, all the other towns would be under Conway. Do you have the exact numbers for that compared to?
What they have, what they have turning to court and stuff like that?
Yeah.
No, I don't have the numbers.
Okay.
Charlene?
I was just wanting some clarification. Steve, one of the things that you had stated in your remarks was that over the past few years, you all had somehow determined that there was more, you know, many more cases or there was more problems and I was wondering, you know, what, what did you base that on? Was it the, well, it's another thing I wanted to clarify. Maybe I should ask Dean first, I'm sorry. So Dean, when you said we had had 143 cases at the high school, what does that exactly mean?
I can't hear you.
Oh.
Can someone speak?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Somebody else could ask the question.
She wants to know what is a case, like what specifically, what sorts of things would come under the definition of a case?
Sure, so a case, a case is essentially an incident, right? Something that potentially violates the law, sounds like it might be a violation of law and needs to be investigated. So something like simple assault, theft, disorderly conduct, possession of drugs, possession of alcohol, possession of a deadly weapon, things that routinely we deal with, all right? So if, if, if it's a, sounds like it's a violation of law, it's going to generate an incident report and we're going to investigate it. Now sometimes we investigate a case and, and we find that there is no criminal aspect to it. It becomes an event, it's still recorded, it's still activity, but it comes off of the, the incident reporting, it becomes an event, so it's still recorded, it's still documented. But those don't happen very often, but that is a category. Ma'am, did I answer your question?
Well, you answered a question, you answered a question that I hadn't asked, but I appreciate the extra information.
Okay.
The specific question I had was when you were referring to 143 cases at the high school, was that this school year to date?
Yes, ma'am.
As in starting September?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that was 143 cases?
Well, not starting September, since the beginning of the year. One, one January, we go one January through 31 December.
Oh, okay, so basically it's been a year.
Yes, one year, one calendar year.
143 cases at the high school and I think Corporal Boucher, did you say there were 26 cases at the middle school?
That's correct.
Calendar year?
No, not at the middle school, like most of those are at the, well, some of those are at the middle school. His are, are, are all over, they're Carpenter, they're Crescent Lake, they're, they're at some, maybe at the high school. Those are 26 additional cases that he picked up since October.
Okay, so 143 plus 26 in the town of Wolfboro, is that what we're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you so much for all the work that you're doing to help keep our students safe, that's number one, I wanted to make sure that was loud and clear. I did have a question relative to your data on running 143 or 169 cases total, so there's publicly available school safety data, and in the, the school safety reports for Kingswood Regional High School, there were zero cases of bullying reported to the state, zero, zero. And you're saying that you're tracking down a lot of zero, there's a lot of zeros in the school safety report, data report that's publicly available, there were only 14 incidents of violence, which is still too many, 14 too many, but there's just, I'm not able to reconcile what's publicly available on state data and what's reported with the story that you're telling, and I'm wondering if you can help me understand?
Sure.
Where the gap is?
Sure.
And are we underreporting to the state, or is it just a lot of, like particularly the bullying, to have no bullying at all in the district is great, but also really shocking that that's a zero number, so help me understand those numbers, please.
So, I don't, what, I, I don't know what I don't know, I don't know where the state is getting the data that you're quoting.
I don't know either.
Yeah, so that, therein lies the first problem, so are they going off a data that is relative to convictions? So convictions are different from incidents investigated, and some of those cases may not make it all the way to a, a hearing before a judge, some of those cases may be dispensed with through restorative justice, or through the JPTO's office, or through counseling, may never see the inside of a courtroom, but we've still taken action, we've still gotten counselors assigned, we've still gotten the, the legal system involved, if that makes any sense. I, I don't know where the data is coming from that you're looking at, I'm unfamiliar with it, relative to bullying. Bullying, a lot of the stuff is handled by the administration, I mean, a lot of that stuff don't even get to us unless it becomes a crime type aspect, and, yeah, it becomes an harassment issue, whether it's online or in person, stuff like that, then we get involved, but a lot of that stuff, Principal Donnelly, BB Charlin, and then obviously our Principal Welch, Vice Principal Welch and Principal Hunt, they handle that within themselves, so that probably would be sort of. If we're involved, we're writing a report, and we're documenting the report, and if need be, we're getting resources assigned through the court system, or we're charging, if it's serious enough, we're charging a juvenile and bringing him, her, and their parents into the court system. So that's probably the best way I can describe it, so I don't, I can't account for the data that you're looking at or where you're getting it from. And a lot of that too, that we have too, they're, they're crime based incidents, like somebody out in downtown Wolfboro getting charged with, we're talking crime basis, so if you take all the stuff that we get wrapped up in, that 169 reports and investigations and time roll in, and then you take every student that goes to Principal Don, their BB Charlin, or the middle school, in all those cases, I mean, it's just astronomical as far as how much we're dealing with all that stuff. Now, one last thing, and then, yes, ma'am, unless you have a question, please understand, just like in the adult world, we may come down to, and a good case here is vandalism, right, we, we have a case of vandalism that occurs at the school, a whiteboard is struck by a magnet and it's broken, and it's going to be a substantial amount of money to repair, and we come in and we do an investigation because that's damaged the school property, it may be a felony, if, if it's over a certain dollar amount, we may not be able to solve that crime, that doesn't mean the crime didn't happen, it means that we can't solve, so there's still an investigation, right, there's still an incident still reported, there's still lost to the school district, and it's still, it's still in our system, although it may not get, it may not make it to a courtroom, it may not make it to a conviction, it may not make it to us finding the culprit and finding, and holding the responsible parties responsible, but it's still in the system, and it may not make it to your reporting database that you're accessing.
The New Hampshire Department of Education.
I, I can't hear you, ma'am.
It's the, what I was accessing was the school safety report for the New Hampshire Department of Education.
Yes, so there's nobody.
The New Hampshire Department of Education.
Yeah, the New Hampshire Department of Education Safety Report.
Yes, so there's nobody contacting us, because I would be doing the report to get that out, so I don't.
I don't know where they're getting their numbers.
We don't know how they.
Would you guys like to join us in front, so we're not yelling back and forth to each other? Would you like to join us now, front, so?
Yeah, I can come up front, sure, is that what you want me to do? I don't, I don't really think we need to have a whole lot of discussion on. Okay, I'll say right here. Questions that are asked, like where reports come from, they already said they don't know where they come from, let's, let's leave it at that.
Basically, the answer to Stephanie's question is, nobody's reaching out for that data from the police department, they're not getting the real data, so wherever they're getting it, they're not going to a source at all.
I assume they're probably going to get it from the Department of Safety, that'd be, that'd be my assumption.
I believe that's end of your reporting from the school district, so that's not in the police, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you, justifying that. I'm gonna, so, okay, good, can I ask my question?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to know what percent of these 169 cases rise to the level of criminal, we know that, and I also want to know how mandatory reporting plays a factor in the increase in number of cases, because obviously, you know, we compared 2000's number, even I need numbers between 2000, maybe 2008, those numbers are obviously going to be lower because mandatory reporting for the last decade has made, obviously, the cases statewide kind of increase, so just wanted to hear you guys' thoughts on those two. Well, first, the question about the data, and then also, if you could just discuss mandatory reporting, how it might affect your case.
I can probably, the data, I can't give you right now, we don't have it in front of us, I would have to look at it, I can surely give it to you at a later time, if that's fine. The mandatory reporting, that pretty comes from the state, and hasn't changed too much, so that wouldn't, that wouldn't increase it a lot.
So you see my, you see my point, at one time, there wasn't required mandatory reporting for school districts?
Yeah.
Then in, what was it, 2009 or 2010, then they had mandatory reporting.
Correct.
So case numbers would have to increase, because there might have been things that administrators, this was an issue across the state, where administrators or teachers were using a lot of leeway to decide whether or not they were going to contact police officers.
So mostly, back then, our caseloads were in the ballpark of 57, what you mentioned before, and now we're climbing well over to the hundreds.
But you can, you can see how, when I look at some of the data?
Yeah.
It might suggest that there's a lot of things that someone might think is criminal, and it might not actually be criminal, but because the school district doesn't want to incur that kind of, not impunity, but doesn't want to incur that kind of, you see what I'm saying?
No, I think you can do.
The liability, that's, that's what I'm looking for, the liability, and so I'm kind of wondering, how many of these 169 cases rise to the level of criminal where they eat?
Most, most of them are.
Most, all, almost.
Most of them are, I'd say well over the 90. We, we don't, we don't take too many, so, we put it to your terms that I think everybody can understand, our time is very precious, just like yours, we're not inclined to take a report on something that isn't a crime.
Okay.
Okay, it, it just isn't going to happen, we're, we're too busy. Now, we may, we may get into a case, and we may determine after we start the investigation, even though it looked and smelled like perhaps an assault of some flavor, that at the end of the day, that's not what really happened, and because we've invested so much time in that, that would become an event, not a criminal incident, okay, if that makes any sense, but if, if, if we go to investigate something that we determine, we can immediately determine is not a crime, we're not going to, that's not going to generate anything other than a log entry in our dispatch system to explain why we want there, it's not going to blow, turn into a blow, full blown up case, because we're just, quite frankly, we're just too busy.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that.
Mary?
Hi, sorry to interrupt you, I feel a little bit easier, but a lot of those two probably are things that happen in other towns, and again, like you mentioned earlier, is sexual assaults. Someone comes to me in my office because they feel comfortable with me, I take them up to the report, I give that report to DCYF, I give that report to the interagency for them to do, and they'll do, and to actually do the investigation, that's part of that. Babing, oh, smokes, I get a whole bunch of those, but I don't prosecute all of those kids with names, so that's a lot of that too. I do take reports for the things where people come and speak to me, maybe I speak with a parent who, I still log it, even though it may not be a crime, but then I give it to our student coordinators, and it's something that needs to be, to be discussed.
Can I just ask one follow up?
All right, one more follow up here.
Do we have a breakdown, and I think I talked to you, Chief, previously, and you weren't sure if you could get a breakdown, but do we have a breakdown of middle school versus high school? Because obviously the warrant that we're considering tonight, we want someone in the middle school, but if the need is in the high school, then we want the warrant to be for the high school. It sounds like a lot of the cases, even the 26 that, that Officer Boucher has taken on, it's primarily here, am I mistaken?
Yeah, I understand, I'm on track, we don't, I'm not seeing any way to break that out, you know, I'm just, I try.
Yeah, I don't see that.
Do you not collect ages?
What about?
Do you not, like, ages, like when you do the reports, do you not, I guess, I guess you have.
I feel like to me, it's, it's the same, or maybe somewhat more of the, the middle school, I just can't be everywhere at all times, so, I mean, I'm trying to get some help through the toll, to try to help you on certain pieces, I can't tell you per se that what's more or not.
Right, right now in our database system, we, we don't, and there's no way that I can make a determination of a crime, other than in the report itself, of a crime that's occurring in the middle school versus the high school versus, for example, Carpenter School, we don't track it like that, we, we trace it, a juvenile cases and an adult case, and then the facts of the case will speak to themselves, so I have no easy way to give you a percentage and say, of the 169 cases, you know, 14 occurred in the middle school, or 27 occurred in the middle, so I can't do that very easily, in fact, it would be a daunting task, and I certainly can't go back in time, I can tell you ages, right, we can look at ages, and we can make a determination based off of ages, but that's still pretty fluid, so unfortunately, I can't give you that number, because we just simply don't track it like that, my database system is not set up like that. Would it be fair to say that the two SROs being requested are for, well, the, the existing one plus, plus one are for the Kingswood complex? Yes, yes, indeed, yes. Would that be a fair way of? That is a very fair way.
The way that it's designed, Jack, is we have a contract now with Officer Klein, who is teaching the high school, which will be the middle school resource officer, that would be their primary scope of responsibility, however, if Mary's requesting assistance at the high school, if you can hide, middle school, that SRO, obviously, will assist that, the additional resources that are necessary, if something's happening at Crescent Lake, the Art Center, wherever help is needed, one or more will go, because Jason's been designated to be our part-time SRO to Wolfboro's elementary schools, doesn't mean that he's directed from going where he's needed, so, yes, they're all basically for the whole complex, the only thing is with Jason, he can go down to Carpenter as well.
Wendy?
Well, Tom has.
Tom.
I've lost track, when you started, I wanted two SROs in addition to our present SRO. Last time, my understanding was that you wanted a part-time SRO for the middle school, when you were asking for two SROs, you wanted a full-time SRO and you switched back and forth between the elementary schools, our time. So where are we at?
All right, let me, let me explain how that all happened, Tom.
Okay.
The first time that we met with Caroline, I requested two full-time SROs.
Okay.
To be added, one specifically for the middle school, one to go between the two elementary schools, and a subsequent phone call that I had with her, she said, I don't believe the district is going to support, and she went, district voters, or the school board, and I get it, two ele-, two elementary schools in the town of Wolfboro, who's going to watch the other schools in the other towns, right? So the commission opted to pay Officer Boucher, who was a juvenile services officer, make him a part-time SRO for the two Wolfboro schools, so Wolfboro was already paying out of our current budget for his work, he's designated to be to move between the two elementary schools in Wolfboro, okay, that's being funded by the local tax.
Okay.
Currently, the only request at this point is just to have one full-time SRO in addition to Officer Klein, and that officer placed at the middle school, so. Right, I think it's important to note that we're not paying for the part-time.
Correct.
You're not, that's coming out of my budget, sir. Yeah, I, I get that, and I think it's important to understand that, so if, if this went through and the taxpayer supported it, we, we're paying for two SROs for the Kingswood, two full-time SROs for the Kingswood complex, and the part-time is being paid for by the, to, the, the Wolfboro Police Department.
Crescent Lake and Carpenter.
Yeah, and we're not paying for that.
What's the total cost, Jack, do you know, the total cost?
The total cost for the two, the two SROs is approximately $110,000 per year.
And we're currently.
That's all, that's all portion of it.
And we're currently paying $55,000.
Well, roughly $55,000 for one, correct.
Okay, I did have a.
Wendy?
So, so first, I just want, my sister's an SRO in Arizona, so God bless you, it's not an easy job, she got off the streets and thought it would be good, and she went, oh my God, this is worse. But, when I hear you talk, and yes, this isn't the same place I graduated from, 1990, my daughter just left here three years ago, and I've sat on the board almost nine years on and off, I can tell you, I've never heard these words spoken about this district, that it sounds so big and scary, and that it is that violent, so first, it kind of takes me aback, and so, it's very concerning to me that I've never seen statistics, regardless redacting the names and protecting the kids as their minors and their parents, but I've never seen any hardcore statistics, as Stephanie has referred to, that say what is happening, and if I haven't found that in a Wolfboro town report, maybe someone could show me that there are these minors getting in such bad circumstances. So to me, it's scary as a parent, sitting here, listening to you, saying how violent this place is, where I've sat here for years and heard nothing, so I will say that from my personal perspective, and to me, I hear you, but there's no data, I hear the cases, but I mean, again, there's no quantifying things, it's more anecdotal that you're, you're dealing with it, but there's no hard and fast things, that there's tragic things happening here, that I guess I just, for me, I look at it, do we get mental health services before the police are intervened, because that's where I think some of those stopgads are, that we don't have mental health services for the kids, that we, you know, that need services, and the parents, before you guys come in, and unfortunately, you guys always come in at the last minute because they've done something horrible, so does the district need to beef up on LICSWs, court duties, more mental health services before you guys? You know, you guys are the last defense, unfortunately, before something tragic happens, because it's already happened, the kid is already wounded emotionally, or, you know, so for me, I sit here going, do I spend $110,000 and hire two counselors versus protection? So that's just kind of my thought on it.
Let me ask, Kevin, and maybe I'll ask Mary a question here, you have 169?
Sixty-nine cases in high school.
Every sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine cases in the high school. We have a hundred and eighty-one day calendar, a hundred and eighty-day school calendar. So based on that statistic, you have one case a day. What is your daily?
What's my daily life?
Yeah, is your, is your?
Yeah, well, it's not just the high school.
And that's what I'm saying, is your, is your day there, one case that gets reported as a criminal?
So today, I had one case, which is great. I actually was with Mr. Sharland earlier. I was conducting a pat search on a high school student because he was playing with an empty round of ammunition in the classroom. So I documented that. But every day is different, and the case load I had was not everything is a crime. Not everything is going to be investigated by me, and it most certainly was not all the high school. Of a lot of middle school also. And last year, I was given a call to Crescent Lake School. I don't think I did anything at Carver School. Yeah, my, my day is, is pretty, pretty busy, and some days I might have two or three. And those two or three could mean, like, one assault that took place in the bathroom, or a kid was jumped. That's like three suspects. So that's three different cases.
Well, that's why I asked the question. I want to clarify a thing.
The cases that we're reporting, it looks like between reported cases and other students coming to you for other issues that aren't necessarily reportable cases, stuff that you're in the building for to support these kids. That, that's, I guess, what I'm trying to, trying to get across, because
I hope to do that more.
It's, it's easy to say, one case a day, we certainly don't want more than one S R O. I mean, that's, you know, but if your cases involve a whole lot more than one single reporting, reportable case in a day, which, I mean, from what you're saying, there's plenty of other opportunity, students, it's a difference. Mary, on what an S does.
And I'm absolutely missing going into classrooms. So last year, at the end of the year, I was able to do a whole bunch of D U I classes and a health class. I haven't been able to do that yet. I've been called upon to middle school because they used to do PowerPoint presentations, regarding cyberbullying, sexting, which is huge. And my goal each year is to hit all the kids in the seventh grade. So they all realize, don't take that picture, don't send it to that person, and please report if anything like that is happening. Because if not, they don't realize what they're doing to themselves, and it carries on forever. And I never had that opportunity to tell that child, don't do this, and this is why. So I haven't even had to do that yet. I also, during the COVID year, the hybrid year, my first year, I did renew, I got, you know, certified to do renew, into counselor student, but I haven't even had the opportunity to do that. And that's what I really wanted to do. So part of the new S R O would be for me to get more into classrooms. Be more of like a counselor, all sorts of good things. I do miss that.
Thank you. Ruby first, and then Tim.
My, my question is, I'm kind of thinking about one aspect of what, what was said earlier, and what Wendy said. And there's supposed to be a report, an assessment, sorry, yeah, inducted assessment of the S R O with the input of our school administrators, and that it would be made before June thirtieth of each year. Do we present that assessment to the board? Has that assessment been happening every year? Do we have to create an assessment where when we meet July or August, we get that assessment? Because I'm currently on the board, we've gone through almost an entire year of my time at board, and I've never seen this assessment. I mean, I'm reading this directly from the resource officer agreement, which was reaffirmed on September twenty-seventh of this year. So I'm wondering, you know, would that assessment happen? Because if we have been getting those assessments, this might be less of a surprise to us.
That's a good question, and I don't know. As long as I've been on the board, I don't remember. So that's a good point.
But I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's not happening.
Well, I can't hear your question.
The, the question is, are the, is an annual assessment being done according, based on the S R O agreement that was signed? Is an annual assessment being done, turned in in June of each year, as required by the, by the agreement?
I've, that's a, that's a great question. I've never seen one.
Since you have to do one, the chief of police?
It will be assessed by school administrators.
Yeah, I've met, in, in the twenty-seven years that I've met, I've never seen one.
Yeah, it says the chief. I'll, I'll read directly from.
I'm sure you're, I'm sure you're correct.
It doesn't, it doesn't really matter. If it's not being done, then obviously that's a flaw.
But relative to data, getting back to what this young lady was asking, I, we do produce an S R O report once a month, and it is read at the commission meetings. And we try to be as, what's the word, more discreet, obviously, because they're juvenile matters, so we don't want to go into a lot there. But what I can do is make sure the super, the superintendent gets a copy of each one of those two reports, and I'll, I'll send that so the, the board can, can see at least the data, the hard data.
And I appreciate that, Chief Rondo, because again, I, I've been on the board nine years, and you telling me, and I'm not, not believing you at all. But this is the first time that anyone's ever said to this entire board that all of these true bad things are happening, and it's concerning to me that, you know, I've never seen a report that, whether it's sexting, or, or, or a sexual assault, or being, you know, beaten up at school, and all of those things, I have never seen that we've had X amount of assault or anything, so.
We, so I've been, I've been chief of police now going on seven, this will be the beginning of my seventh year, starting in about my, my second year, is when we began to really see an uptick in what I would consider very serious felony level crimes. And the very first case that I think S R O Devine worked on jointly with S R O, S R O Llewellyn, was a fairly significant child pornography case that originated out of the middle school. And that was very troubling, and that took four of my officers every day and night, round the clock, four months, to, to get a handle on, to identify all of those images, to try to get them tagged into the system, to try to get, we're working with I C A C, our federal partners, on this. So, and, and I apologize if this is catching the school board by surprise, but we have reported this in the commission meetings, and, and we will do a better job at reporting this data to the school board. That's my promise to you. But I'm coming to you tonight with a tear in my eye to please support this because we're at, we're not at a want stage. This is not a want. This is a need. I need this. We need this. The school district needs this. We need to keep children safe. Everything that S R O Devine and Corporal Boucher have stated are, are facts. There is no hyperbole here. School resource officers, police officers on campus also serve a security function. Having a team up here that can respond to an active shooter situation is critical. That's the other piece to this. So yes, they, they're here to, to, and you asked a question. You said, what can we do? Well, this is one of the first steps, right? We're identifying a problem. Let's get the officer where the population needs the assistance. Let's get that resource in place. Let's develop those relationships. And if we find issues and problems, then we can start the process, and we can get it corrected early enough in the system before any further drama and trauma occurs. Thank you, sir. Ma'am, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Speaking of trauma, I was wondering if there's any additional training that the, the S R O's or would be S R O's would be receiving, or do receive? Like you had spoken about, you would love to do like counseling type things, but that generally requires license. Like, even at a minimum, do you have like youth mental health first aid, or training in trauma response, de-escalation strategies, or, like, what additional training do you get as an S R O to help you with that population and for that prevention piece before it becomes a crime or a crisis?
Right, so I'm not saying I want to be a counselor. I'm absolutely not a counselor. But I do want to help students, like, set goals and achieve those goals. And that was part of the new program that I haven't been able to do. But the new S R O would have to go through the national school resource officer training. So it's a week-long training, basically everything you said, but with a high priority of school safety and security. And that's, that's national, so every S R O has to have that.
And there are trainings that do pop up on everything from critical thinking to inclusion, to diversity training. In fact, we all just completed diversion and ethics and implicit bias training. So de-escalation techniques and methods, we call it verbal judo, right? Being able to, to tone down a situation and restore peace. So there are a lot of additional trainings that are available that come up, that we send our, our, our officers that are going to be dealing with children and juveniles through. And clearly, we would make that a priority for these officers as well as any new S R O. We're also looking to hire, should this be, be voted on in the affirmative, we are looking to hire an already certified police officer with an awful lot of experience to be put in this position, because this is a, a position of great trust and responsibility, and you want a very well-educated, well-experienced police officer in that role that has some, some years in the teeth, so to speak.
One question I had. I'll see if booting helps. One question I have. With taxpayers, we always have to justify, you know, any expenditure we try to support. And I'm looking at our enrollment figures from two thousand to two thousand twenty-two. And we have had a decrease at the middle school of seventy-two students, down from four sixty to three eighty-eight. At the high school, we've had a decrease in students from eight eighty-five to seven twenty-four, which is a decrease of a hundred and sixty-one. And district-wide, we've had a decrease from two thousand nine hundred and three to two thousand two hundred and twenty-five, which is six hundred and seventy-eight fewer students district-wide. So I, I guess I'm sharing Wendy's concerns specifically because based on, on this information we're getting tonight, and having had no reports of numbers of cases for as long as I've been on board, you know, we have to be able to justify this expenditure. And I'm struggling with the fact that what I'm hearing tonight is that we have fewer students, but they're committing more crimes. So that can, that concerns me deeply, not only, you know, as a, as a board member, but also as a member of the community. So are you attributing this? I think I understood that you were attributing a lot of this to the fact that we have, you know, much more access to social media and whatnot. But, but I'm also, I'm, I'm very much a visual learner, and I've heard a lot of good information, but I haven't seen any, any kind of tracking data. And I'm, I'm really struggling with trying to tell our voters that, oh, hey, you know, we have six hundred and seventy-eight fewer kids in our district now, but they're committing a lot more crimes, which I think is what I'm hearing. Just looking at the fact that the numbers have gone down, but there's this, you know, a hundred and sixty-nine cases in just the town of Wolfboro.
So the, relative to the numbers dropping in the district, I think there's a number of reasons for that. I also think those numbers are gonna come back up, right? We can look at the COVID year. We know a lot of parents took their children out of school, or I can say so not a lot, but perhaps some parents took their childrens out of school to either go to a private school or to homeschool because of the COVID restrictions and not necessarily wanting to follow COVID protocols, whatever. Those are all personal decisions. I think those, those children will come back, number one. Number two. Yes, I think from two thousand through two thousand twenty-two, society has undergone, undergone a lot of changes. I think the things that children are being exposed to now are causing a lot of problems. I certainly don't want to paint the picture, and please, you know, if I am painting this picture, it's not the picture I'm trying to paint. I'm not trying to say all of our, our kids are juvenile delinquents. That's not what I'm saying. What I am saying is that the activity's been increasing. And I think you're gonna see the activity continue to increase and keep going up. We know we have a need for an S R O in the middle school. There's no doubt in my mind. And we're trying to keep this population safe. I think the data I have speaks for itself. This isn't two thousand. We're not running fifty cases. We're not running seventy-five cases. We're running a hundred and sixty-nine cases. The vast majority of those are occurring at this complex. I don't know what else to tell you relative to that.
Do you, do you have any kind of hard copy of, of the information where you determined that most of the cases are taking place at the middle school?
No, we, we, we asked that question. That was asked, and we, we don't. We, I have seen an uptick in the cases over the last three years, particularly at the middle school. Certainly, some of our more serious cases have occurred at the middle school. But I don't have, I can't give you any, any, certainly any concrete data saying X number percentage are occurring at the middle school versus the high school. We just don't track like that.
That was just, our, our student population, do we expect it to increase in all of the next decade? Because I know the state of New Hampshire just came out with a report that said enrollment across states decreased by over ten percent over the last decade, and they expect that number to continue decreasing. Is our school district gonna be part of that trend too? Are we gonna see, we're gonna break that trend and see an increase, or? I know it's a tough question to answer, but.
I'm not sure I can answer regarding enrollment over the next decade, but I have seen those numbers, those figures, and those trends, and those studies as far as enrollment decreasing. I've also seen the, the trends that crime is increasing. And I know we're, we're focusing regardless of declining enrollment. And I know we're talking a lot about, you know, issues within the school. Certainly, that takes up a lot of the time. But I want to make sure it's, it's said that we're, we also need S R O's for the safety and security of our staff and students. And that is, you know, I absolutely agree, that's not something that has been focused on in this district. However, I saw a pretty overwhelming cry from parents at school board meetings this summer following tragedy in Uvalde, Texas, as far as wanting to know what is the answer of our district as far as how we are keeping our kids safe within the school and outside of the school. So as we've said in our task force, we're doing several different things for personnel. We're hardening buildings, but we're also, you know, I, I see S R O's as part of a bigger plan for safety and security. So while I appreciate, you know, the call for data and, you know, the concrete information, it's, it's one piece of the pie with, with respect to safety and security, the whole plan. So I encourage the board to, you know, think of this as one part of a bigger plan to, to keep our kids and staff safe.
Yeah, I just, first of all, I want to thank, especially the resource officer in Pittsville, past and present, and the police department for responding and taking on this responsibility. I believe in the high school where there's, I think it's three hundred, three hundred and thirty-six more students than the middle school is also bigger now than it's needed. But I will be honest with you, with, there's a missing link here, have the board member that I don't have. And it's a conversation with the middle school today principal, who has been there for many years as an assistant. for many years as an assistant. I would like to ask her some questions about me. And we're all asking the same thing, but let me just give you, I'm an actor, so let me give you an example. I'm a middle school student, and I'm walking down the hall, and I see a BIC lighter right here on the floor. Now, for all I know, it's a lighter. So I pick it up. Now, I'm in the hall, so this little trash can. I put it in my pocket. So a student sees me put the lighter in my pocket. So some student runs to the office and says Dana Streeter has a lighter in his pocket. Well, come to find out, the lighter is all smashed. There's no liquid in it. You can't even spin the wheel on the BIC lighter. It's trash. It should have been picked up and thrown in the trash. But I haven't had time to get to the trash, put it in my pocket, somebody reported it. Now, let's say, for example, there's not an officer in the school. Well, you have an assistant principal and a principal. It's very easy to pass on that responsibility to the police. Let's say we're not an assistant principal, and the principal aren't going to make the decision. They're going to call the Wolfborough PD. Wolfborough PD comes up. Out of the student's pocket comes this piece of trash, right? So now, the Wolfborough officer says, I'm not going to write anybody up. I'm just going to talk to you. I'm going to say, how did you get that in your pocket? So then the student explained. Well, why couldn't the assistant principal and the principal make the determination? Because of how it's written, maybe in the handbook, student handbook, that it's easier to have somebody else make the decision than it is for them to make the decision.
I appreciate the motion picture at all. So what we've been doing though is that we've been working with the principals and the DBs and stuff like that, even with Principal Hunt, Principal Wellstaff, middle school and stuff like that. That stuff don't even get to us. They make their own decisions. That don't even come to us. We changed that probably about three years ago. When I first became chief of police, that was one of the things that when I was looking at the numbers going on in the school.
I mean, I appreciate your response, but sometimes maybe the action could have been handled in-house before the call.
We totally agree with you. And that's what I'm trying to get at. When I first became the chief of police and looking at the numbers that we were tracking on with our SRO at the time, SRO overwhelming, and when SRO Devine was coming on board, I wanted more of those type of activities to go back to the school administrative staff. That was something that I didn't necessarily see a role for a police department. I wanted to get back to things that were more germane to the duty of a police officer, investigation of crimes, restoring the peace, keeping the peace, teaching, being that resource to the faculty and staff, being a resource to the students. So we started changing that. We started pushing a lot of that back. A lot of your first-time offenses when it comes to tobacco, vaping and so forth, not even animal violence. We only get involved when it's recidivism or repetitive behavior, and then we come in and take action. So that's the other piece, part to this, right, Mr. Streeter? That I'm trying to get at, these 169 cases in total that we're talking about from January 1 through December 31st, 2002, correction, 2022, these are indicative...
So you've had communication with the...
Yeah, this is indicative of, we've already made those changes, and you're still seeing these numbers increase, right? You've not seen the numbers come down, you're seeing them increase. And the other thing, the other piece part to this is, and getting back to Ms. Sable, a lot of the cases, if you were to talk to Chief Keaton up in Bartlett, you know, back in 2000 when he was our first SRO, a lot of the cases were things like, you know, disorderly conduct, maybe some simple assaults, some schoolyard bullying type stuff, the things that we would normally associate with young men and women in a school environment, right? Things get set on the playing field or in the locker room or what have you. And those were reasonably dispensed with fairly quickly, right? The investigations weren't too long. The outcomes were probably pretty good or better. We're seeing some really troubling things now. We're seeing some really troubling things where these cases are complex. They're, in some instances, felony-level crimes. In fact, I just received a letter from the county attorney's office where she wants to join. So I have an attorney, full-time attorney that works for us along with Corporal Boucher, our juvenile services officer, wants to join us in the prosecution of four cases, four juvenile cases that are felony-level. So, yeah, the cases are becoming increasingly complex. They're requiring a lot of time, a lot of time to investigate, a lot of time to track down witnesses and take statements and make sure that the rights of the juveniles as well as the witnesses are protected. So this isn't easy, and this is why we need this officer. We need this officer. Thank you.
Surely, one more question, and then I think we'll end the discussion at this point.
You're welcome, sir.
I'm going to try to speak really loudly so you can hear me.
Let me come closer. It's not you. When I was in Iraq, I did two tours of duty in Iraq. I was blown up.
Oh, geez.
And so that blast IED took a lot of hearing from me. So I wear these 50 hearing aids I get from the VA.
Okay, well, my question is based on the fact that one of the reasons for having the school resource officer is to help make sure our children or staff are safe in the case of an active shooter situation. And I think one of the things the whole nation learned about the tragic situation in Uvalde was that having one, having one didn't necessarily translate into protection. So my question, and I don't want to have too much out there in the public, which could, you know, forewarn someone who wants to do something heinous. But in the agreement, it specifically says that the decision whether to have the SRO armed is ultimately up to you. So my question is, since we're trying to keep our children and staff safe in case of an active shooter situation, I mean, it seems obvious to me that our SRO would have to be armed, and I'm just wanting to make sure that, you know, whatever weaponry she or Corporal Boucher carries is, you know, obviously accessible, effective, and yet secured so that students can't access it. So I'm just wondering if that particular situation has been, you know, worked out so that, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, if an officer has a Glock, it's going to get a little too much against an AR-15. But, you know, my concern is that, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing what we're saying we're hiring someone to do.
Yes, ma'am. So in order, yes. So officers of personal sidearms are in what are referred to as retention holsters. So they have double or triple safety features on them. So we get in fights sometimes. Not everyone wants to be arrested. So we have to protect ourselves. We have to make sure our firearms can't fall out or can't come out if they're easily grabbed or something. So when the firearm, the individual firearm, the sidearm is on the officer, it's in a retention holster, so it's very secure. Okay? Relative to other weapons, whether they be M4s, whether they be shotgun, they're properly secured with proper safety features, and they're in retention systems. So the thing I do want to bring up is relative to active shooter, having a team is very important. When I was in the Army for three or four years, we did everything as a team, all right? And that's how you win. You don't win as an individual, right? You're not going to be successful. But as a team, you will. Having a team up here on this campus, a team of three, would be a critical deterrent against any would-be bad act. And that's so critically important. We look at a lot of the failures around the country when it comes to active shooters. And I do the deep dive on the data and look at what worked and what didn't work. We have to assemble very quickly. Seconds really mean lives, and we have to move toward the sound of the gunfire very quickly to neutralize the threat. And with a team of three on this campus, we're going to be assured of success that much faster. So I can't state this enough. This is critically important. I would not be here asking you tonight and taking up your precious time if I didn't think this was overwhelmingly important. This is the most important decision that this board will make probably all year. Thank you.
Okay, I think we've had enough discussion on this. This is not an action item. We're not voting to authorize anything right now. We will have a discussion about the warrant article when we get into approving the warrant articles as we through the rest of the agenda. Okay? But we're going to move on. Thank you very much for all the input. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And, you know, you're certainly welcome to stay. We're getting into the fun part of the agenda, which is the budget. So if you're really, it's certainly up to you. Thank you. There's one member of the public here, and so we should go through the full... It's up to you.
What is your question? Because I'd be happy to redesign that.
Well...
I ask because if we are, I'll take a two-minute break.
I would just like a copy of it. Is there a way I can come back?
Sure.
And then you won't have it.
Okay. That's, no, I certainly appreciate that. And if you have any questions, you've got my phone numbers.
Absolutely.
So you can call me anytime.
Don't we have, Stephanie, that's a good point. You said, I'm not going to steal your...
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Don't we have to present the budget?
Well, I'll go present the budget.
You're just talking...
I'm going to, now there is a hand right now, and so I'm going to give her one.
Yes, so we'll have our public hearing now that you have a, we'll have the public hearing, and I'm going to say we're going to go right through the budget process now.
Can you get a motion to open the public hearing?
No, I don't think we do. We've never had that. We've never done that in presenting the, because this is just harm, we're in the republic, the public's not going to...
Oh, yeah, usually the chair does, that's right. The chair does open the public hearing.
Right, no problem. Okay, so if you look at your budget packet, I think you have the enrollment numbers which compare this year's with last year's numbers. Last year, we had 2,107 students across the district. This year, we have 2,169. If you look at the general fund under employee section, which is the next page over, as you know, we are a people business, and about 75% of our budget is people-related. The wage section is going up 3.2%. Unfortunately, the health insurance this year went up 8.6%, which is difficult. But the New Hampshire retirement system, because the rates went down, actually went down 8.62%. So the increase in the employee section of the budget is 3.07%. Under the general fund, which are the next two sections, the administration and the budget committee spent significant time in cutting as many areas as we could possibly cut. Some of the increased areas are snow removal because we never know exactly what that's going to be. We also have certain fuels and transportation that are up. Electricity is up, heating oil is up. But overall, that section of the budget is up $472,000, or 5.56%. And some of that is also tech-related. We want to keep up, it's $148,000 for new replacement equipment. Most of that is our Chromebooks to make sure we stay on track and keeping our technology The next, and that basically finishes that part. There's a collective bargaining agreement that we have negotiated with the Governor of Warth Education Association, which calls for a 3% increase plus steps, CTE, coach, and extracurricular stipends for the year one, the same for year two at 3%, and the same for year three at 3%. The specific warrant articles that are going to appear are a building and maintenance warrant article, which is being reduced from $200,000 last year to $150,000, mainly for budgetary purposes. That article, we use each year to take care of the major projects that need to be done that are outside the general maintenance programs. We also have the $60,000 article for the turf field, which again is not new money. That's money that if it's left over at the end of the fiscal year, comes out of anticipated funds and deposited into the turf fund capital reserve account. Fortunately for us, the turf field looks like it has a useful life of up to 15 years because of the great maintenance that we've done on the field since we've had. The three-year agreement for the first year that will appear in the warrant totals $752,025 in salary and benefits for the Governor of Warth Education Association. Under the debt service, debt service interest goes up and principal goes down as we start continuing to pay off the debt. And our debt service is actually going down total by $6,495. The next page is the default budget. The 2023 budget was $43,616,68. That's the employee expense section. The total budget, I guess maybe is the easiest, the grand total for 2023 was $58,44,150. The proposed budget, I guess, the proposed budget is $59,810,618. The default budget is $59,304. So the default budget this year is less than the proposed budget by $506,244. The last page is the important dates to remember. Last day for collective bargaining, which fortunately we're done with, is January 10th tomorrow. Last day for petition warrant articles is January 10th. Last date to post the warrant budget and default budget is January 30th. And the filing for district offices will double-check Tom's dates on that. And the deliberative session is February 4th, 2023, at the Art Center at 10:00 a.m. Any questions on the budget?
I'll just speak to the, do you mind the filing dates? I know Wolfborough's SB2 and Catwater are close to the filing dates, as the 25th through, I can't remember what, but...
Whatever the appropriate filing dates are, as we make sure, we'll make sure that we correct those and have them done. So any other questions on the budget? We look for a motion to approve the budget as presented, and then we will have the full presentation after deliberative session.
Some move.
Is moved by Brody, seconded by Jim Pittman. All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair votes aye as well. Thank you. So that's
Mr. Chair, could we just comment for our, our studio audience at home?
Yes.
All of these figures are posted on our website. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. All these figures are on the website. So anybody that would like to see them. And again, my, my phone number is in the, in the directory. And if anybody would like to call me on any questions about the budget, certainly feel free to do that. So that is the, we are done with the budget now. The next section is the first, actually, we just, we already approved the budget after the hearing. So the next section now is to approve the warrant. And I think that's the last section. There's another, I'll figure it out.
I was under the impression that the, the district voters approve each section. For example, there's an agreement with the teachers association and school board and support staff, school board, and then management and the school board. But on this, I, I don't see an agree, any figures that they're going to vote on for support staff raises and benefits.
Dana, the the collective bargain agreement is article number two.
Yeah, but that's just
That, that's the agreement that
Isn't that just the
That's, yeah, they, they already approved the administrators and the support staff last year. And you don't vote on that every year. You just vote on that one. It's a three-year contract. You vote on it once. And then the, the second two years, the second, third year are automatically in the process. You don't vote on them a second time. So
I just remember seeing it at, at the
Yeah. Right. And that was last, last year for the administrators and for the support staff. But once the voters vote for a three-year contract, we don't vote on that again until a new contract is established. Okay? Okay. So the first, the first thing we're going to do is adopt the individual warrants. And, and I'll read through them really quickly. The first warrant article is for the school district officers. And again, we have a school board member from Brookfield, a school board member from Wolfboro, an at-large member for three years, and a one-year at-large position, which is Tom currently. And then the school district moderator for one year. And that will be voted at, at the, at the ballot box in each one of the individual towns. Article two, to see if the Governor One Worth Regional School District will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Governor One Worth Regional School Board and the Governor One Worth Education Association, with calls for the following increases in salary and benefits at the current staffing levels. Fiscal twenty twenty-four, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, twenty-five dollars. Fiscal twenty twenty-five, one million, twenty-one thousand, six hundred and one dollars. And twenty twenty-six, one million, forty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, twenty-five dollars for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year. Such sum representing additional costs attributed to increases in salary and benefits required by the agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. And the school board recommends this appropriation. I'd like verification of the school board.
I'm sorry, I forgot the teachers were four years.
No, the teachers are a three-year contract.
Wow, now?
Yeah, the, the prior one was four years. That's correct. But this is a three-year contract. And I, I would take a, for a motion to approve that warrant article as presented. Moved by Charlene. Seconded by Dr. Jim. All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye. The next warrant article is, is just clean up. If that warrant article fails, the government, the authorizing body, Governor One Worth School District, can call one special meeting as an option to address article two cost items. We, we don't have to really vote on that. That's just, just a matter of process. But we, we, I'll, I'll take a motion to approve that just because it's part of one of the articles.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Brody, seconded by by Dr. Jim. Okay, all those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie? Dr. Jim?
Yep.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. All right, article four, shall the Governor One Worth Regional School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant article and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant and as amended by voters at the first session. For the purpose setting forth therein totaling fifty-nine million, eight hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be fifty-nine million, three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous actions of the Governor One Worth Regional School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special session in accordance with RSA forty, semi-colon thirteen, section ten and sixteen, to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. Note, this article, this warrant article, operating budget does not include appropriations requested in any of the other warrant articles. The school board recommends this appropriation. I would ask for a motion to accept that warrant article.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jim?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brody. Any discussion? All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yep.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. All right, the next one, to see if the Governor One Worth Regional School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars to be added to the tough turf field capital reserve fund previously established and furthermore to name the school board as agents to expand. This sum to come from June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three fund balance available for transfer on July first, twenty twenty-three. No amount to be raised from taxation. Board recommends this by, by majority vote. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Brody?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Jim?
Discussion?
Discussion. Go ahead.
I can remember when we decided years ago to go this route. And I can remember with bringing up concerns about the toxicity of these artificial turf fields. Are we doing anything in terms of maintenance to try to mitigate all of the, you know, god-awful stuff that flies up from underneath the pretty green grass whenever our cat, our student athletes hit the, hit the turf?
The, the only answer I have to that is we will, we will have the Building and Maintenance Committee look into that to see what can and can't be done.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to approve that warrant.
So moved.
Moved by Brody, seconded by Dr. Jim. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye. Charlene, just, just so you know, you know, we have a twelve-year life on this turf field. And because we've taken such good care of it, it's been extended to fifteen years.
No, I, I understand that part, and I, I understand.
But, but your other concerns will be looked at by the Building and Grounds Committee.
I, I thank you for that, and I will absolutely hold all y'all's speech to heart.
Okay. Okay, the, the next, the next one, shall the Governor One Worth Regional School District raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for repair and improvements of buildings and grounds at Kingswood Regional High School, Kingswood Regional Middle School, Lake Region Technology Center, Kingswood Art Center, Carpenter School, Crescent Lake School, Evergian Elementary School, New Garden School, Hossipis Center School, Tuckton Borough Central School, and the SAU forty-nine transportation facility. Board recommends this appropriation. Majority vote required. Moved by Jim Pittman?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Jim. Okay, all those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, and the last, the last proposed warrant, and again, if it's approved, it'll be on there. If not, it will not be. I will read it. Sure. To see if the Governor One Worth Regional School District will vote to raise and approve the sum of fifty-five thousand, eighty dollars for the purpose of creating a new regular school year position of school resource officer. And I'm going to change this for the Kingswood Complex. Can we do that? For the Kingswood Complex. The school board recommends this appropriation. Majority vote required. That's if the board does pretend to require a majority vote for this.
So we're striking regional middle school and replacing
Replacing it with the Kingswood Complex.
I have a procedural question.
Yes.
Are these votes also, it'll be the recommendations, the voters?
Go ahead.
Okay, just checking because I know some, some places do it differently.
Yeah.
So didn't, didn't the commissioner say that he wanted the SRO to be based at the middle school though?
That's, that's up to the, that's really going to be up to the administration to decide if the vote, one's based at the middle school, one's based at the high school. We're, we're looking at two SROs for the Kingswood Complex total. And I guess that would be, the, the general consensus would be one would be at the high school, one would be at the middle school.
I was wondering if we can be clear to the voters about, or even just to myself. I have a child in the middle school and want to know if there's going to be an officer station there.
Yeah, if, if this is approved, I think you If I'm not mistaken, would it be one at the middle school and one for high school?
That would be correct. That's the, that's the purpose of it. But each day could change depending, I mean, some days Austin Devine might be out sick, vacation, training, and then it would be the whole complex.
But, but yeah, one, when, when both of them are there, basically, one would be based at the high school and one would be based at the middle school.
And remember, please remember that you'll have Corporal Boucher, who will be splitting his time between Carpenter School and Crescent Lake School.
So I don't know, maybe we should talk about, do we really want to change it to Kingswood Complex? Can we, can we just change it to, to be based at the Kingswood Regional Middle School? That's the intent, is to base that person?
We could do, we could certainly do that. To be based, so we, school resource police officer, SRO, to be based at the Kingswood Middle School.
I don't like that language.
All right, wait.
I'm going to speak as a resident in the district.
Yeah.
Everybody in the district thinks of this as a complex. So when you're saying you want to vote for an additional SRO for the complex, the public's going to think this SRO is going to take care of all of the students in the complex along with the ones that are already here. That's not confusing to me as a taxpayer. I think that's easy to understand because everybody that has kids that come here thinks of this as a multi-school complex. It's three schools. So they're thinking this officer is going to be watching out for all the kids in the complex. That's just me as a, as a taxpayer, thinking that way.
Me, me as a mom thinks of, likes to think of them as separate.
Yeah, I, it's just a different way of looking at it. I had children came here. I, I mean, that's just how I, I look at it.
And, and part of that, part of that discussion can also happen at the deliberative session. You know, because when this, when these warrant articles are explained, there's, there's a lot of explanation that goes with them at the deliberative session, the whole script that goes along with them. So that part of it could certainly be explained. The intent is to, you know, again, have the officer based at the middle school, but again, available to service the entire complex in those types of explanations.
I would just, can I just speak up? Just to say, I would hate to think that if you were to put in the warrant article the smaller granular middle school, that it would tie you to just the middle school. We can certainly have legal counsel look over this. We just didn't have time to have legal counsel look over this. But I would hate for you to get stuck on a word that would prohibit you from having the SRO officer go to the other schools. I'm wondering that too. Just how can we make it clear that they're based there, but able to serve all? That's why you don't put based at a certain place because that would be too constrictive, I think.
I have, I have a separate point, and, and I'd like to bring up
Charlene, Charlene had a question first, or Charlene?
And it goes to the fact that we're a multi-town district. And so when we're talking about the complex, that includes one of Wolfboro's elementary schools, which is still the district. But are we then going to find ourselves needing to approve SROs at all of the other elementary schools?
I've never, well, I've never thought of Crescent Lake as part of the complex. Crescent Lake is an elementary school outside the complex. The complex is the middle school, high school, vocational center, and art center.
Okay, all right. So as long as we're, all right, got it.
All right.
And, and the thing is, we're actually talking about preschools and the night complex. Not just two schools, because the thing is, the Kingswood Technology Center is its own separate school.
Right. Right.
And has its own set of population. Its population doesn't come just from the towns and cities. It comes from Boltonborough, Ladstoun, Ladstoun.
I'm a little bit worried that we haven't had this article reviewed by legal counsel. I guess it's simple enough where you don't need to, but I mean, every other article, I assume, our legal counsel would review or aid us in writing.
Well, I think basically if we want to change the wording to it, to say that it came through complex or, or whatever, that's certainly part of it. I think what we need to vote on, and we can certainly, we, we have to post the warrant on the thirtieth of January. So I think the idea tonight is to either approve or not approve the, the second SRO as a warrant article.
We would, we would not have legal counsel review before it's approved.
Right.
Okay, so we don't
Right. It would have to be approved and then, yeah. Dana?
Is this the last day?
Tomorrow is the last day that any article can be added to it. January tenth is the last day for warrant articles and petition warrant articles.
Yeah, but we're talking, I mean, we can adopt the warrant. We had enough to think of this.
It has to be posted on the thirtieth.
Okay. But this is the last day for adopt?
Adopting, yes. So this is, this is where we have to adopt the warrant articles. Again, wording can be changed if necessary to, as, as long as it's not, it doesn't change the intent. So what we're looking for is, do we want to approve a warrant article for a second SRO? And if we, if so, we'll vote on that tonight. And again, if there's wording changes that need to be made, we can, we can certainly, as long as it doesn't change the intent, then we can change the wording to, to fit in with the RSA's that, okay?
I like using, I like using complex. I agree with Kathy O that just specifically saying the middle school was very limiting.
And again, all of that explanation can be done at the deliberative session as well. The warrant article says one thing, the extent of the explanation on what this SRO would do, where they might be based at, or if in general, and all of that can be at the discussion at the deliberative session itself.
I would feel more comfortable saying it's for the complex.
Yeah.
If that's clear to taxpayers.
Yeah, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. So, so the, the consensus then would be to change for the Kingswood Middle School to the Kingswood Complex.
Correct.
And, and I think the current contract for the current SRO, when it's redone, should basically say the same thing, SRO with the Kingswood Complex.
And also when we redo it, we're going to remove the gender specific.
Abs, absolutely. It will be reworded for your approval.
No, no. I'm talking about the global.
Yes, yes, but yes, absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, so where, where are we? Okay, so where, where are we, do we have a motion, and do we not?
So moved, second.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Jim. And it's consecrated by Jim Pittman for the approval of the warrant article. Now remember, we can approve the warrant article, it's up to taxpayers to support it. If the taxpayers do not support it, then it doesn't happen. So, like any of these warrant articles, you know, we're recommending, that doesn't necessarily mean that the taxpayers are gonna approve.
Would you please read the article again?
The article would read, "To see if the Governor of Wolfroth Regional School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-five thousand eight dollars for the purpose of creating a new regular school year position of resource, of school resource police officer for the Kingswood Complex."
I, I feel as if this process has been sort of rushed, that's just my personal opinion.
Yeah.
I can see the need, I really respect the fact that the chief and the captain have come and really, you know, worked everything out with us and everything. It's, um, it's just tough when we have a lot of questions, and we weren't sure, you know, when we were gonna get those specific answers. I'm, I'm reading over the current agreement, it seems like there's things that need to be re-reviewed, which, that's a total separate issue, but that haven't even been followed much. It's just, um, we have an obligation to the taxpayers, obviously, but also to the safety of our students, and to, to ensure that we're delivering the best educational product we can. I'm just, um, I'm still at this point undecided about, I'm just undecided, I'd like to hear what other board members have to say.
Yeah, you can vote against it, you can abstain.
Yeah. But I, I just would like to hear what other board members might have to, what they're kind of thinking.
If I may, I, I'd say the chief has made a compelling argument. I, I think we give it a year, see how it works, see if the results that they hope to gain are there. Next year, if we say, wow, that was a bad decision, well, so be it.
And, and let me, let me, I'll, I'll address the thank you for that, because I, I, I'll address that. This is, this is why it's not in the operating budget, why it's a separate warrant article, I want the taxpayers to have the ability to vote on it. At the end of the year, if, like Jim said, if we find that this isn't working for us, and it's not working for you, it's not gonna be in our operating budget. That's, that's just a simple, simple fact. But I, I think if, if it works, and you can provide the data to make sure that we understand what's happening, and that it is, it is an effective position, then it would be included in the, in the regular budget.
I, I would also, just, just sort of echoing Brody's concerns. You know, we've all been here for a while, and I would hope that in the future, if the police commission decides or makes a decision on something, that before they share what they want to happen with the newspaper, I think it would be a much better, more collaborative exercise if the police commission would make sure that they talked to the school board first, because that was really weird.
I would be more than happy to communicate that to them, ma'am.
Thank you, because I did not like finding out something in the paper that we hadn't even talked about.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, if we-
We got it.
I think, I think it might be worthy, next year, when we assess this position again, having a joint board meeting, because it seemed like the cart was placed out of the horse. Usually, the school district goes to the police officers, you know, to the police commission and says, we need this position because we found this personality. In this respect, there was a warrant article presented to the Wolfroth Board of Selectmen, and then it was, the question was posed after all of our budget hearings, I mean, you know, no, I didn't, this wasn't brought up once during our budget hearings, that this would be a consideration. And here we are at the, you know, at the eleventh hour, and, and I can, you know, I don't wanna vote against it, because there might really be a need, and I don't wanna, you know, put it off and be like, well, I didn't get the fax then, and then get the fax tomorrow, and realize I made a mistake. But it's, um, I guess the process is just what kind of, has had me a little bit just confused, because I felt, I felt as if this board was never really given the opportunity to voice, to voice how, how we might feel, whether or not this personality. It wasn't as collaborative, and in our resource officer agreement, it says very specifically under the purpose, the last sentence, "The spirit of the agreement requires both agencies to work together in a harmonious relationship so that the greater good the district needs to serve," which is always true.
Right.
But this process was not as harmonious as it usually is, and I hope we are, you know, communicating a little bit better, getting that June thirtieth report that's required, making sure that we're, we're, you know, meeting as a joint board, if we assess this position's need in the future. I think those are the ways that we could have really bridged the lack of communication, because that's what, to me, it felt like there was just a lot of lack of communication, that's all.
Okay, all right, that's good.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, just let me say this, I hear you loud and clear, I got it, criticism accepted. We will, we're delighted to coordinate with the superintendent, the vice superintendent, and come forward as honorable board with interview data, in our PowerPoint presentation, onto exceed three to five PowerPoint slides, with all, with all the data. And then I will make sure that the superintendent has our SRO reports, plural, that, that I, I produce to the police commission on a monthly basis. And that way, all that data will be shared with you. My apologies for not, I was not aware of that, I hadn't read that piece of the contract. Of course, I didn't develop this contract, that's no excuse.
No.
But we'll, we'll fix it, and we'll report, thank you.
All right, thank you, all right, we're ready to vote, and, and vote your conscience. Tom?
Aye.
You can vote, yes, no, or abstain.
I'll abstain.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Here, the ayes are gonna have it, so it doesn't make any difference, so.
No.
You wanna say no? Okay, and Chairman O'Shea. So six, one no, and two extensions. So the warrant article will appear as modified by the Kingswood Complex, as opposed to Kingswood Middle School, and will go on the warrant as presented then that way, with that.
Will the vote count?
Vote, the vote count is, is generally just by majority vote, just as usually by, by majority, board, majority vote.
We don't list the votes.
I don't think-
Change the vote if listed.
Yeah, we're asking-
Isn't, you know, I, I see, I don't know if it is or not. There's the individual, no, there's no warrant, so?
Oh, I'm not sure on what.
I don't think we passed the tally, we, we did not pass the tally, because if Governor Wolfroth doesn't have a tally-
I don't think, yeah, I don't think we ever put the tally on.
It would be one article to put the tally on.
Yeah.
It's a warrant article.
So, yeah, I guess we've never had a warrant article to record the tally of the board, it's always been by majority vote of the board. So, so we don't have to, don't have to list the individual votes, okay? Okay, so that is adopted. The next, so we adopted the warrant, we adopted the budget, the next is who on the board would like to speak to the individual articles?
I volunteer to speak to-
Wait a minute, go ahead, Jim.
I, I just wanted to say, on the first page here, it says, "For Effingham voters to be determined for location."
I, I guess it's gonna be in the school?
No, it's gonna be town hall.
Town hall?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the eighth warrant article?
What's that?
Is that the eighth warrant article, we need to read that?
Oh, the, no, that's, that's one that we don't have to approve, that's done by the moderator. So, yeah, the moderator just says that, and, so that's not us.
Okay.
No, no, thank you, I appreciate that.
So the Effingham vote is going to be in the town hall?
Town hall, and as town moderator, I can tell you that for the select.
Yes, you can. All right, sounds good. Okay, the spokesperson for the articles, you, Charlene, which one do you wanna speak to?
I volunteer to speak to article number two.
Article number-
And I'll do three as well, because it's just housekeeping, yeah? Unless somebody owes a dime to two.
Article number two, the contract?
I don't, that's-
No, no, it's just-
Oh, no, you know what, that should be someone from human resources.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I think it would be better for it to be someone from human resources. Whatever, I'm just, I didn't do any of them last year, so I'm just trying to, you know, carry my weight.
Well, human, human resources is, Wendy?
So what, which one does she want me to do?
Dr. Jim, Wendy?
Articles two and three, Wendy. I mean, I, I don't mind showing them, it's just, I'm just, you know, trying to get the ball rolling here, so if it has a desire-
No, if, Wendy, would you wanna, you wouldn't, would you wanna do that?
I will do whatever makes-
Okay, why don't you do, why don't you do two and three then, because three, three just follows on two, if two fails, then three is the default.
All right, two and three is me.
Okay, so that's gonna be Wendy.
I'm sorry.
Number four, which is the budget? I'll volunteer to do the budget.
Yeah, I figured you would.
Number five is the turf field?
Not it.
I can do that.
Okay, Brody's gonna do the turf field.
Who is, Brody?
Yeah.
And Jim, will you do number six?
I'll, yes.
Charlene gives the SRO.
I can do seven.
You wanna do the SRO?
Sure.
All right. Stephanie's doing the SRO.
Oh, look, I'm off the hook.
And, and, you know, those scripts will be all written for you, as we've always done in the past, and you'll get them like the day before, so you can re, re-
Are we doing any improv comedy as well?
You can, you can, if you're so inclined.
Yes, and.
Okay, anybody, anything else? Okay, yes, you, I'm sorry, you have one, I know you have one. Go for it. I, I hope so.
Okay. So I had a question regarding safety at athletics, and so I, by a board member, so I reached out to our athletic director, and he reached out to our athletic trainer, Alex Dria, who provided a very thorough, excellent answer, which I'll read here. All of our coaches are required to have a certification in first aid and CPR. In addition, every team has a med kit, which includes a CPR face shield, gloves, and materials for bleeding control. We have emergency action plans in place for all home venues, which cover everything from mild injury through cardiac and/or respiratory arrest. All home venues also have an AED available for use if needed within the recommended AHA timeframe, except for the back sports fields by Crescent Lake School and the tennis courts. We have two mobile AEDs, one that is with the athletic trainer during all practices and games, as well as a second, which is used to fill gaps such as the tennis courts in the spring season. The athletic trainer is usually at the Kingswood Complex with a mobile AED to help fill this gap of the athletic fields near DLS. We do not have ambulances stationed at sporting events due to the cost, when last investigated, it was close to two thousand five hundred per two-hour event. The emergency services in Wolfroth have a typical response time of two to three minutes to the Kingswood campus, where the majority of sporting events occur. Due to the nature of the community, often Wolfroth Firehead personnel on-site with emergency equipment, but this is not guaranteed. There's an athletic trainer on-site for the majority of sporting events, both practice and games. The only time there's not an athletic trainer available for competition is when there's a conflict of games. The highest risk event is covered by the athletic trainer, and every effort is made to find qualified medical coverage for competitions where the athletic trainer will be off-site. There are unfortunately times when additional medical coverage is unavailable, and competitions have no medical coverage beyond the level of training of the coaches. Away contests are covered by the hosting school, and they usually will have athletic trainers available, but not always. Most of the schools we play at the high school level have an athletic trainer, but few of the middle schools have any medical coverage available. The only sport where law requires medical coverage be present for competition is football. In addition, our alpine ski practices and competitions are covered by the host mountains.
Okay.
Thank you, I was wanting to ask you that.
Yeah.
You got it.
How they have to rest with the NSL playoff.
Okay, moving on to Chairman's report, just a couple of notices. We sent congratulations to Marie Sandboard, preschool teacher at Austin Central, on birth of her daughter Nova, on November fifth. Get well wishes were sent to Susan Delise, SEU office. And Tina.
Revillis.
Revillis, thank you, ESL teacher in the district. Sympathies expressed to the family of Jackie Roberts, how do you say, we? Nancy Rose, SEU on passing of the father, the family of Philip Ford, longtime custodian of his recent passing, and Kelly Tipton, on the passing of his loved one, so be good for her. So, moving on, the committee reports.
Okay.
Academic affairs, from the top.
In case I have any questions or concerns, I'm, I'm gonna defer to Katie or Heather. But we did get a wonderful update from the Director of Curriculum, Katie Kill, and one of the things I'm really excited about is that starting next year, Kingswood Regional High School is going to be offering a new English course, you know, English twelve on Holocaust literature. It is open to seniors, and the course is going to explore the Holocaust through various genres, such as, you know, novels, poetry, what have you. And one of the really exciting things that I, I wanted to point out is that this, this course selection was overwhelmingly requested by our students. And so huge shout-out to our students, as well as their teachers, and, you know, the fact that, that they took the initiative and were able to have this course brought forward, so that's starting in the fall. Currently, the plan is to offer it to CTP or honors level students, and because it's being piloted, based on how that goes, it may be extended to, to other classes. There's also going to be a new course proposal process that is going to streamline new proposals, and it'll, you know, give, give the chance for a presentation before a panel to share the proposal. And there are various people who have been designated, who will be serving on that panel. Another thing that we're going to be doing next year, middle school is going to switch to trimesters, and there are a few reasons for that, probably, to me, one of the most compelling reasons, as was presented to us, is that it's going to create less transitions for our students than they currently are experiencing on a quarter basis. And what this does, it will give more opportunity for teachers and students to, to, you know, build relationships. And, but last but certainly not least, this particular setup is going to coincide with our reporting terms at the elementary schools. So that will be history. So, did, Stephanie, or Tom, wanna add anything to this overall report, before I get into the policies?
No, I think you did an excellent job.
I think at the middle school, it would, it would affect students, I think there would be one less elector thing we take, is that right, Caroline? Am I, two, oh, wait, potentially. There, because of the fewer number, instead of having eight slots for unified art specials.
Instead of two every quarter.
Instead of two every quarter, there would be a total of six throughout the year, so it would limit that a little bit. It's a point that might be relevant in comparison, so, it's relevant for me.
And, and that, you know, full, full, you know, full disclaimer, that is what many might think would be a downside. It also means the- might think would be a downside, it also means there'll be, you know, less students agonizing over what courses they can take because they'll theoretically only have a chance to take six as opposed to eight, but the consensus was that this was a, overall, a good plan to move forward, and so we were, we were excited to hear about that news. You have moved to policies, you have in your packets, recommended for adoption, second read, and unfortunately, I just met up with Stephanie a few moments ago, that there, and I guess, I'll need to defer to Tom's recollection, if we direct your attention to policy JH, which is up for adoption tonight, under student attendance, absences, and truancy, Stephanie, why don't you take over and express your concerns regarding section B procedure for excused absences?
Sure, so it is considered of most equitable practice to allow parents to either call or provide a written note to indicate that a student's absence is to be excused, that is current practice. I, when I call, because a child, my child is sick, I pick up the phone and I call, and that, that is an excused absence. The way this is currently worded would require parents to provide a written notice, and that has been, the, the practice of requiring a written parent note has been studied pretty extensively at the national level, and so it is considered an inequitable policy. So I, I recommend that the school board consider adopting the language of parents or guardians to read throughout. So, parents slash guardians.
Parents versus parents?
Right, so we're, because many children in this district are not raised by their parents, they're raised by other guardians, should either call or provide a written note. Heather, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I missed that line. I think we discussed striking the second sentence that starts with parents must also provide written notice, so I would recommend that we take that out, that sentence.
Right.
And then put parents and guardians wherever it says parents currently. We do, we do ask for a call simply because if you wait until the next day for the written note, then that causes all sorts of other issues with accounting for the child, so we would still, in my opinion, look for that call, but, but I missed striking that second sentence, so we try to avoid the confusion.
The practice powers, and it is too, except they email.
Right, so that could be a written note, so I sometimes will email the school.
Okay.
Yeah, or notify, notify the school.
So, in this particular policy, I see a few places where it just refers to parents, so for, for, I think Stephanie agrees with this point, that we should have it be parents' guardian or parent guardian throughout.
I think friends or guardian, or parent, parents or guardian, because you don't want to say and, if you, if you say and, you're still, you know, it's inclusive.
Yeah, yeah, you can. I was just thinking we'd say parents slash guardians, which means one or the other, which is a lot easier than.
Okay.
So everybody's good with that?
Yes.
And I think that for the ones that are up for approval tonight, I believe that is the only modification we're looking for, so I, if I'm doing this correctly, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I would ask for a motion to approve BBBF.
Well, you could actually make that motion if you want.
Oh, okay.
Committee.
Okay, well, I move that we approve for adoption tonight, the five policies listed, and I will state them for the record. BBBF, student board members. EBCD, emergency school and district closings. IHBAB, special education evaluations. IMBA, distance education. And JH, student attendance, absences, and truancy with the noted revisions.
Right, it's moved by Charlene. Seconded by?
Me.
I had a, I had a question about, can I direct it to Charlene here? I had a question, Charlene, about BBBF. When I, when I read it over, I noticed that there's no, there's no end date on the tenure of office ends. And it might be implied, I mean, maybe.
It's just a one-year term. One-year term.
Just a one-year term.
Yeah, on the section B.
Okay. Oh, so I guess technically, okay. Okay, that's all, that's all I had.
Okay, so all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yep.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair was aye.
Okay, now moving to the second group, which were, which we brought in court the last time, and these are ones that we have revised, and, let's see, okay, so, starting with, these are up for approval tonight, second read, were there any questions or concerns about either BBB, EBDD, or GBGA?
Everybody?
We did not receive any.
Okay, and you didn't receive any, so I move that we adopt for revision, the three policies which I will now list, BBBB, school board elections, EBD, indoor air quality, and GBGA, staff health.
It's moved where you're second.
I can do.
Seconded by Stephanie.
Tom, are you awake over there?
Oh, sure. All those in favor?
I don't really need to speak, I don't have to.
Get the next one, Tom.
See, Tom's going to speak right now. Tom, do you approve that?
Aye.
There you go. Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yep.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Chair was aye. And Dana?
Yes.
Okay, and now, recommended for withdrawal, second read, and Heather has received no questions or concerns about these. I will, oh, and I, one thing before I get into making my motion, one of, one of the things that, that we have been happy to include, and much thanks way down at the end of the table to Kathy Legasi, because she has done yeoman's work on this, but we are including legal references on all the policies that were applicable, so that everyone can see from whence we made our decisions. So, yay Kathy. Okay, so recommended for withdrawal, I move that we vote on these en masse, we're looking at, I make a motion that we vote to withdraw EBCE, delayed openings slash emergency closings, IHBA hyphen R, home education instruction, IHBG hyphen R, participation in public school activities by home-educated and non-public school pupils, JHB, student absences and truancy, and JHB hyphen R, student absences and truancy.
Moved by Charlene, seconded by Tom, okay?
Okay.
I, I did have one question, actually, to broaden up.
I'll wait for, I'll wait for Brody.
All right, is, so is the IHBG dash R policy, is that being replaced, like, is that supposed to be, like, I see the JJJ dash R, is that being withdrawn, and then that is replace it with the JJJ dash R policy?
Yes.
Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess my one question is, if we withdraw that policy before we adopt the other policy, do we theoretically not have a policy until we meet?
No, because we have JJJ.
Oh, JJJ, address it.
Yes, and, yes, and that's in full force right now.
Okay, and, and my question's kind of null and void, doesn't really matter. All right, no, thank you.
Okay, so motion on the floor?
Motion on the floor to withdraw those five policies, five policies, five policies. All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair was aye. Okay. Moving to first readings.
Uh, yes, we have, just looking at all these policies, trying to find, but that's okay. So, we have first read, recommended for adoption, JJJ hyphen R, and you can read all this, this means that you all have to go through all of these, they're up for first read, and between now and our next board meeting, address any questions or concerns to either Heather, oh, let's just make it Heather, how's that, Heather?
Great, thank you.
Okay, address any of your questions or concerns to Heather Cummings, and then, then we can hammer that out on, at our next meeting.
I'll try to get those questions to you before, so don't ask for them again, I'm sorry. I didn't get to read this until last night.
There's no such thing as a dumb question, now.
I said redundant.
Oh, I'm sorry, redundant.
There are such things as dumb questions.
Oh, well, there's.
All right, what else you got to show me?
Um, I, I, I'm not reading through all these, all I have left is the ones, item E, which is the ones we're recommending for first read, JJJ hyphen R, administration regulations for access to public school programs by non-public charter school of home-educated pupils, JLCPA, medical treatment, parental consent, I guess I do need to read these for our, our audience at home who can't see what we're speaking.
Sure.
And those are the ones we're recommending for adoption. Recommended for revision is AD, philosophy of the governor with the regional school district, as well as IHBA programs for pupils with disabilities, and recommended for withdrawal first read is GBCD hyphen R, background investigation and criminal records check, and item GCAA, highly qualified teachers, and just, you know, for clarification, the reason that we're looking to withdraw policies in general is because they've been replaced by other policies, or they've been determined to be redundant, and in the case of GCAA, highly qualified teachers, that was a specific policy that was required 22, I think, years ago because of the No Child Left Behind Act, which is now moved. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Charlene. Moving on, Jim Pittman?
Uh, no new report from building maintenance.
Finance, no new report for finance, you've heard enough. Human resources, nothing there either, so closing activities, advanced planning, conceived level low, no school, Martin Luther King Day, Friday? I think it's Friday, I guess.
No, I think it's Monday.
It's a Monday, it's a Monday.
Today.
One week, yeah.
The week from today.
And we have to check on.
What, but why didn't they, why didn't they?
Because it's a, well, I'm looking at that.
Anyone had to better.
Maybe, maybe, all right, anyway. Public input.
Oh, what, hold on.
Yeah.
Come on, well, Charlene, I'm, I'm just saying that, and, under the filing dates.
But we haven't gotten it yet, we haven't gotten it yet.
It's part of advanced planning.
It is.
Well, it is advanced planning.
It is advanced.
But we said, but we said we're going to check that out.
Well, I know, but I just want to say, there it is again.
Here it is. Deliverer session, because.
The 19th.
It is.
It's what?
The 19th, not the 18th, the start.
Oh, really? You already found out?
Well, she's already cleared.
Okay.
But, but.
I've already did my research.
So, is it different because we're a school district, as, or is it, do we have a mountain discretion?
No, I went to the state website, and we follow the same, same date.
So it kind of, someone, so that's what matters.
So, February 4th, 10:00 AM is the deliverer session, and our next school board meeting is in Tuckamore, 1/6, 1/6 of February, and now we'll take public input.
Anyone else want to go?
Thank you.
Right, first, Bella, you rock, thank you for being here this long. And, um, I think my head's going to explode, because this was a long meeting, and I'm sorry, I really came here kind of for one thing, but now I have to ask other things, so that's the way it goes. So, I want to go back to the warrant article for the police, I'm just going to start with that, I'm going to throw some questions out, probably ask them at the deliverer session, but it would be nice if people could take this over before then. One, I'm curious how the cross-town goes with the sheriff's department, if we have SROs here, but something's reported, what, what goes to the sheriff's department? Where do they have to report instead of keeping in Wolfboro? One of the things Mary kept saying was, students were coming into her and confiding to her, which means, I think, Stephanie, that's where the numbers are getting off, is Mary then having to open up a report for, say, things like sexual assault that didn't happen on campus but got reported on campus? So I'm curious about that, if that's the reporting, then do we need an SRO, or do we need a counselor for these girls to go to?
Or boys.
Or boys.
Have you brought the county attorney in to talk to Michaela and Drewzy about how this works, considering we are not talking about this Wolfboro, we're talking about different towns that are all in the same county? Four, this actually probably doesn't relate to you, relates more to Dean's left, what happened with our time officer we put on two years ago, who was supposed to handle our juvenile cases that Wolfboro paid for directly? Five, uh, does, if you put an SRO in the Kingswood campus, are we just shifting a potential incident to another school? These cases don't just happen in high schools, they happen in lower grade too. So are you just, if you're having such a concentrated police force effort here, would someone who's going to do something active just switch to one of our other schools? Like Osby, that's not.
There's, there's an, there's an active safety committee structure that we met once, and we're going to meet again, about discussing how we handle those particular situations because of the small police forces in some of the towns.
Like Osby.
Yeah, like Osby, or, or Tuckamore, or Effingham, for the most part, or even Nudra, maybe, you know, how, you know, what mechanism do we have as a collaborative effort, whether it be with the county sheriff's department, or if there be some other agency that can handle the elementary schools? Because obviously Wolfboro has the biggest department, and they can, they can, you know, they could, if they wanted, they could put another SRO in the elementary schools if they wanted, without a seat to pay for it, but Tuckamore can't do that, Osby can't do that, so there's, but our, our security and safety task force that was sort of put together when she included all the officers and fire departments and all from all the different towns, met here, discussed how that's going to work, and there's more, certainly more to come.
And then, one more, I didn't hear a dollar amount for that SRO?
Yep.
That wasn't on what we were hearing tonight?
Fifty, fifty-five thousand, eighty dollars.
So how does that compare to bringing a counselor in versus an SRO? So.
Yeah, the, the, see, the SRO is not an employee of the school district, so we, we pay a portion of their salary, where, you know, a counselor would most likely be a full-time employee of the district with benefits, et cetera, et cetera, so a counselor would probably be twice what a SRO.
Then I'm going to move on to just your calendar, when you were talking about your calendar, you talked about the snow days and Clement weather, you did not add heat in there, and I know that, just as someone who's been in the schools, we have a couple of schools that we've had canceled due to heat, so I don't know if you need to add that down the line, putting it in your days where maybe the high school's open, but one of the smaller schools isn't. I'll leave all the other stuff to the deliverer session. I came here for two reasons today, this evening, one is a petition warrant article that I will, you guys can just read, I'm not going to talk about it, it'll end up at the deliverer session, but it's a warrant article reaffirming our first amended rights, it has to do with our libraries and the content in our libraries, I was required to get 50 signatures, I have 104 on here, I know you do have to check the signature.
Yeah.
I highly recommend you talk to the town of Wolfboro, because they have a warrant article that looks almost like that.
Okay.
With 77 of the same signatures.
Excellent, I appreciate that, thank you so much.
And then the second thing I just wanted to say.
you guys knew that there is a bill proposed, HB 61, which is going to be a bill that reverses the divisive concepts law. And you can go onto the calendar for Thursday and state your preference for HB 61.
And that's the general court?
The state legislature, same house, same house.
Do you have your house, just the general court and then...
General court, go over the calendar, on Thursday the 12th, there will be two meetings for the education committee, the top meeting. You might also want to tell most people in this room, your representatives, you have two of them on the education committee, Representative Paternell and Representative Cordell, you're both on that committee, you might want to just email them, tell them your preference for HB 61.
Thank you so much, Bobby.
Thank you, Charlie.
No, no, I certainly appreciate you hanging in here with us tonight.
We had a lot going on.
Okay, next item on is closing comments by board members. If anybody would like to say anything really quickly, and it would be great, other than, I thought the presentation was absolutely fantastic. Just a spectacular...
I thought, I just, I have one that was fantastic. The other thing is, I think we should consider, as a board, you know, moving forward, we should consider meeting jointly with the police commissioners after the June 30th report that needs, and maybe make it a yearly thing, just so then this kind of communication discrepancy doesn't happen.
Yeah, I think that's certainly appropriate in that we, that we move forward and get the monthly reports that are being, that team has provided for...
I have a question.
I just think a yearly roundup would be good too, because I was, I'm equally as surprised to hear about a lot of the issues happening in the school, it'd be good just to interface with them once a year, similar to what we do with the tech center.
Charlene?
I have more of a procedural question.
That's all right.
The warrant article that Bobby has submitted, this petition warrant article, is that, are petition warrant articles subject to the board being able to vote on whether the board supports it or not?
Generally not. The, what would happen is, the petition warrant article would appear during the deliberative session, when that article comes up, the petitioner would be given the opportunity to speak at the deliberative session about the merits of the warrant article. At that point, if the board members have some questions or whatever, they certainly can ask questions to the petition.
So that would be an ideal time for a board member to specifically make sure the public knows that we do have in place, and have for some time, policy IGE, which is...
That would be the appropriate time to...
Directly parental objection to specific course material.
That would be the time to bring that up, after the presentation by the petitioner.
Okay, thank you. I'll just say, I voted to, you know, to bring the warrant article about the SRO, you know, to approve that, because I think that the taxpayers have the right to decide. But I do have concerns about the data sharing and the data integrity, and I would hope that, out of the conversation to make, that those will be cleaned up, so that we can...
And I think we have to hold...
Looking deep and looking after that shit.
I think we have to hold, you know, feature the file when he says, you know, he's, he'll provide the monthly, say, his decisions, the superintendent and all that.
What's reported to the state?
Right, meeting, meeting to, with them, as a collaborative meeting at 1-2, to see what they can do, and all that, so. Absolutely, this was a mess on their part, but I think we're cleaning that up in this process.
Is that a motion?
No, it's not a motion.
No, I'm just going to... I should make jokes later. I was going to say it was a mess on their part.
Okay, I will entertain one additional motion.
To adjourn, motion, so moved.
Second, oh, can we all do it?
All right, all right. Vote you by board, seconded by the entire board, all in favor? Aye. Aye, aye. Thank you.